Good morning to all attendants here in person at the Prison Museum in Huntsville, as well as to all of those attending virtually. The 345th Meeting of the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is called to order in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. During this meeting, the Board will be conducting business from the agenda posted in the Texas Register. Members of the Board of Trustees present for the meeting include myself, Eric Nichols, Vice Chair Faith Johnson, Secretary Dr. Roddy Burrow, Judge Molly Francis, Ambassador Heishan Siv, Pastor Nate Sprinkle, General Bill Welch, Sidney Zeicher, and Tom Fordice. A quorum is present, and the 345th Meeting of the Board is declared open. This meeting is being conducted in person and is also being broadcast on the Texas Department of Criminal Justice YouTube channel. It is 8:01 a.m. Before we begin today, I would ask everyone to please rise as you are able for the posting of the colors from our Region One Honor Guard.
Honor guard, out. Permission to post colors?
Permission granted.
Detail, present arms. Order, arms. Two steps to the right, march. Center, face. Post colors. Ready, step. Present arms. Order, arms. Center, face. Center, face.
Please remain standing as you are able and join us as a board in our pledges of allegiance. Texas Department of Criminal Justice Chief Programs Officer Jason Clark will lead us in the pledges. Mr. Clark, please proceed.
Chairman, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, one God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I would now, please be seated. I would now ask Wyndham School District Trustee Pastor Nate Sprinkle to offer a word of prayer as we start our meeting today.
Thank you, Chairman. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we come to you today, and we are thankful for this day. We are thankful for this season. We are thankful for the joy, the hope, the peace that anyone can enjoy as we reflect on you sending your only Son, Jesus, into this world so many years ago. You expressed your love to us so deeply in him, and we are grateful today. And as we begin this meeting of the Wyndham School Board today, we also come to you with thankful hearts, thankful for all the teachers, thankful for the support staff, for the administrators, for the leadership of Wyndham School District. Thank you for the great work that they are doing, how they diligently give themselves unto the benefit of so many lives. Father, your word says that to the one who pursues righteousness and loyalty, that one finds righteousness and honor. And Father, for these that serve in Wyndham School District so loyally and faithfully, we pray that you honor them. We pray that they know the true rewards of doing a job well for those they serve and for you. So, Father, as this board meets today, we just ask that you give us wisdom, that you give us direction in any decisions that face us today. And we do this in gratefulness to you, and we thank you for hearing our prayer. In the name of your Son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Sprinkle. As a courtesy to speakers and guests in this meeting, we ask that you set your electronic devices to the silent or vibrate mode. Again, I would like to thank everyone who is here today, and also a special thank you to public officials and our staff representatives who are with us here today in the room or who are attending virtually. We appreciate all of your service in whatever, in all capacities in which you serve the, our great state of Texas. The Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is committed to providing an opportunity for public presentations on posted agenda topics, as well as public comments on issues within its jurisdiction, as provided in Board Rule 301. Persons interested in speaking at today's meeting were required to complete and submit a registration card at least 10 minutes prior to the meeting's posted start time. As no cards were received prior to the required deadline, the Board will not hear public presentations on posted agenda topics today or public comments on issues within the Board's jurisdiction. The next item on our Board of Trustees' agenda are recognitions, and our first recognition, as part of our first recognition, Wyndham School District's Department Director of Operational Support, Charles Bell, will be recognizing Wyndham's Recreation and Wellness Administration, Administrator Reagan Penn. We please both join us at the podium, and you're here. If you're ready, Mr. Bell, you may proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, all members. Superintendent Hartman, I thank you for this opportunity. Today, we recognize Reagan Penn, the district's Recreation and Wellness Administrator. She has dedicated over 20 years to various leadership roles in education. Ms. Penn joined the district in June of 2022 as an academic teacher at the Hodge Campus before transitioning to a career in technical education teaching role. She was promoted to Recreation and Wellness Administrator in May of 2024, passionately leading a team committed to making a meaningful impact on the lives of residents and staff as it relates to their physical, mental, and overall health. Since her promotion, Ms. Penn has introduced several new initiatives to enhance employee wellness, including a monthly Recreation and Wellness Report, a Health and Wellness Fair for both TDCJ and Wyndham employees, and incentive-based challenges. Ms. Penn also set up a benefits table at the statewide principals' meeting, providing materials on employee benefits for principals to take back to their campuses and share with staff. These innovative practices have contributed to significant growth within the Recreation and Wellness Department and have made a positive impact. Ms. Penn holds a bachelor's degree in Exercise Science and Fitness Management. Her favorite title remains "coach," drawing on her years as an award-winning head softball coach for Mineola, Resul, Taylor, and Will's Point Independent School Districts. She excels at building strong, winning teams, and thrives on ensuring her staff has the skills and resources to succeed. This makes her an outstanding leader in providing health and wellness options for employees and residents. Growing up as the daughter of two college athletes, sports were a constant presence in her life, ultimately leading her to a college softball scholarship. From her parents, she learned the values of hard work and perseverance, which shaped her determined and goal-oriented nature. Her father, also a coach, remained one of her biggest supporters, and she's certain her mother, a former Wyndham principal, would be incredibly proud of the impact she is making on staff and residents overall. Please join me in thanking Ms. Penn for her dedication and commitment to bettering lives within the Wyndham School District and the Texas Department of Criminal Justice.
Ms. Penn, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. I think we all recognize the importance, in our society generally, of professionals like you who are doing, dedicating your time to making sure that we're doing the best we can to support our employees and others around the state in their own personal journeys, including their health and wellness. And so, as a former softball coach myself, I can't tell you how much that we all appreciate your service in this capacity. Would you care to share a few words with us?
Yes. Thank you, number one, thank you for letting me be here this morning, and thank you for the recognition. Getting into this job brought me back to the things that I love about coaching, which are, you know, leadership roles, teamwork, and making an impact on people's lives. Our, the things that we've done so far has nothing to do with me. It's all my team. They're the ones that are out there doing that work to help our residents and help better them so that when they do get out, that they can be productive citizens. But I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and thank you very much for the opportunity to lead this team.
The next agenda topic covers consent items. Are there any amendments, objections, or abstentions from the Board to the proposed consent items? Hearing none, the consent items posted for this meeting's agenda will stand approved. The next item on our agenda is a report from our superintendent, Ms. Christina Hartman, regarding the Wyndham School District and recommendations resulting from the review conducted by the Texas Sunset Commission. If you're ready, Ms. Hartman, you may begin.
Yes. Good morning, Chairman, members. As we are all very aware, Wyndham is under the review for Texas Sunset Advisory Commission. During the October meeting, Chief Programs Officer Jason Clark did a really great job discussing the thorough process to evaluate an agency's effectiveness and identify recommendations for improvement. Today, I will discuss some of the outcomes of the staff report and the impacts on Wyndham. So, one recommended change related to Issue Four included in the staff report is the transition of post-secondary education oversight from TDCJ to Wyndham. The district is eager to engage with post-secondary partners, and we've actually been doing quite a bit of that over the last couple of months. Recently, at the beginning of November, Ashley Kuntz, our College and Career Readiness Administrator, and I traveled to Amarillo and met with Amarillo College and Clarendon College, and also Frank Phillips College, which is a college that's interested in providing services at the Del Hart unit. So, we're not only looking at supporting the current partners, but also bringing on new partners to assist within TDCJ, creating more educational opportunities to support the students. So, also mentioned in the staff report were Wyndham's data and evaluation processes, including our biennial evaluation and report, and the turnaround time on student placement in the district voted parole program, changing habits and achieving new goals to empower success changes. And certainly, we could not do that without assistance from TDCJ classification and our partners, ensuring that those students get to class with the excellent education officers that are at the campuses. We appreciate the acknowledgement by the Sunset team, and we are very, again, fortunate to be supported by TDCJ and the hard-working campuses, teachers at our 100 campuses, which is part of what makes changes effective, that it's offered across the district and that teachers are cross-trained to provide that instruction should we have a vacancy. So, next was mentioned increased collaboration with TDCJ, and I will say that April Zamora and I have each other on speed dial, so we talk very regularly through collaboration as it relates to rehabilitation and reentry, and Chris Carter and I have a meeting scheduled soon, and we will be on the phone, I'm sure, just as regularly. So, we're certainly impressed with the steps that TDCJ has taken up, leading up until the Sunset report, and also following the Sunset report, you know, recently meeting with Jason Clark and his team to discuss the ITP processes and pardons and paroles. So, it's always nice to collaborate and move forward. The one thing that I will also mention before I get back to the post-secondary processes is that there was a finding related to rule review. So, Wyndham has two rules, two whole rules, that we are certainly working on now, and already, our general counsel has routed and begun this process. So, the rule review plan that was recommended has already been submitted to the Board, and the review is beginning this month. So, it's also important to note that neither of Wyndham's rules regulates private affairs. One rule involves the internal organization and operation of the Board, and the other describes the process to provide public presentations and comments. So, we'll really be looking at whether these two rules are even necessary as we go through the rule review process. So, there was, of course, a hearing on Wednesday, and then one previously to talk through recommendations, and as you all saw, the recommendations related to Wyndham were quite positive. We've already discussed post-secondary and our team going out and visiting with colleges. We are going to the territory of the college. We are meeting on their campuses to see what their needs are, to see what their wishes are for expansion, to see what kind of support we can provide, and then we're going on to the campus and touring there. So, you're seeing increased collaboration between Wyndham principals and college and university partners. We're really excited about pipelining students from Wyndham School District into post-secondary programs. That is how it works in the community, and for those of you that are familiar with the Pell regulations and the recommendations provided there, the services in TDCJ setting should be substantially similar to the services that students receive in the community. So, we are excited. We think that you all will see some new innovative processes and practices in collaboration with TDCJ. Out of the Wednesday hearing, just a couple other recommendations that were made. One was picking up the independent recommendation from Wyndham that we change language in our Chapter 19 of the Education Code statute to align with community terminology, and then also exploring partnerships with Texas State Technical College and exploring some data partnerships. We're very excited about moving forward, and we thank the Sunset team for their assistance. And I would like to thank also the individual running the PowerPoint, because as he knows, I'd absolutely go off-script on these things. So, we are done, and you can move forward now.
No, but stick on this last slide here, if you don't mind, because this is a photograph of members of your team, you and members of your team, with members of the Sunset staff, correct?
Correct, and they had a really great time going in, speaking with our staff and speaking with the students. It was a positive, eye-opening experience for them to go into classrooms and see individuals learning. And I think, as we've often said, until you go into a prison setting, all you know is what you see on TV, which is not happening in many cases, in a good way, right? Because when we watch movies about prison, they're not showing impactful staff that are helping people better themselves. They're not seeing people sitting in classrooms concentrating. They're not seeing people walk out of the door, you know, with a handoff to employment. So, they were very pleased with what they saw there.
And I'll repeat a comment I made to the Sunset Commission about staff's involvement. This was by no means what you might call a desk review of the Wyndham School District or of TDCJ. This was members of the staff actively going out to various units, as Ms. Hartman said, going to classrooms, seeing for themselves exactly what was going on, which gave, of course, them a good base of support to be able to make the recommendations that they did.
Absolutely, and we thank them for that. We like that thorough review process. We can't get better unless someone is honest and transparent about where we need to be better, and so we appreciate the efforts from the Sunset team.
Just a couple of other questions about your presentation. So, in terms of reaching out to our post-secondary partners, what are the, what are the means and mechanisms by which you, you try to establish an effective partnership with those, with those institutions?
So, the first step that we have taken So, the first step that we have taken, and this was in collaboration with TDCJ, was bringing everyone together for a presentation, introductions, and making sure that we had our regional principals there so they can connect with Wyndham staff. Secondly, we scheduled some introductory virtual meetings where we met virtually, and then we planned visits to their campuses, to their college campuses. And that was me that went with our College and Career Readiness Administrator, and I think that that's important. You know, certainly, this will be a great task for our College and Career Department, but it's important to show them that leadership from the top, that this is a priority for us. And then, of course, having them come out to the campuses, collaborate with principals. One of their biggest questions is always related to space. As you all know, there is limited space in education departments, and as we talk post-secondary expansion, a lot of that space is occupied by Wyndham staff now, and those are important programs. However, we're going to have to look at scheduling where we can coexist there. These post-secondary partners are members of our team. We're on the same team, and these are very important processes for students. So, I think that when we meet with them and we talk through it, they're very encouraged. And then, of course, the conversation about space comes up. So, we have some teamwork that's been going on now. Charlie Bell, who you heard from earlier, has conducted a space assessment. He has layouts of all the education departments, which classrooms are available when, what are some of the unique things that we can do to make sure that there is space for everyone to operate there. And then, we'll see the return on investment as these individuals who graduate from the post-secondary programs following Wyndham are reentering successfully with gainful employment, not just at a living wage, but at a high-wage, high-demand job. So, you'll see more career technical education opportunities. You'll even see some more expansion of university-level courses. Now, you better not ask any more questions, because I'm really excited about this, and I will just keep talking, so we're gonna go ahead and stop.
Well, you're not the only one that's very excited about it, I'll tell you that. And along those lines, my last comment is, or question is, how are we making sure that we're recognizing these post-secondary partners for all of their contributions to the mission? Do we, are we able to show the public through a website? Are we able to do other things to make sure that the public knows who these partners are and how much we appreciate them?
Yes. So, they've brought together, they have a consortium now of all the partners that are operating in TDCJ, and they are preparing to launch a website, and we've certainly, you know, we're happy to assist with that. We're waiting on signature on a memorandum of understanding where we see the official transfer, and then we'll be blasting them all over social media with us and showing that partnership going from Wyndham programs to post-secondary. It is a solid career pathway, and our Communications Administrator is taking notes here in the front row.
I have to put on my executive producer of my podcast hat and say, you need to get out there, and we need to like, share, thumbs up, share on Facebook, share on YouTube. This is a really important thing, so great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Hartman on her report? If not, thank you, Ms. Hartman, and the next order of business is the Chairman's report. And as you know from prior meetings, the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees takes great pride in the variety of educational programs available to individuals within the Texas Department of Criminal Justice, and is excited to highlight the exceptional career and technical education opportunities provided. And this, I'll just say, this is one of those language changes that we will all adopt in our verbiage going forward. This is one of these that came out of Sunset, and instead of saying vocational, we're gonna start saying career and technical education opportunities. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. So, I've got it. Everyone knows very well by now, or should know by now, the board's support of Wyndham's outstanding academic and life skills programs. Everyone also knows very well by now, or should know very well by now, the board's desire to sustain and grow the CTE opportunities made available to those who qualify among the TDCJ population. The direct correlation between having a directly marketable and practical skill when leaving TDCJ for the free world and the likelihood of success and avoiding a return experience with a criminal justice system, including reincarceration, is real, and it's proven. And so, we spotlight another one of those CTE opportunities provided by Wyndham to eligible members of the population today. Today, we spotlight Wyndham's horseshoeing program. So, I think we've got some photographs that are gonna be shown as I talk here. Based at the Wynd Campus in Huntsville, each participant in this program is required to step forward in a significant and life-changing way. Each participant is required to spend a minimum of two years in the program. During these two-plus years, each student enjoys on-the-job training supplemented by extensive classroom instruction. This is not just about learning how to become what in that profession is known as a farrier, someone who specializes professionally in equine hoof care. In addition to mastering technical horseshoeing skills, the program places a strong emphasis on the overall welfare of the horses with which the students work, again, in a manner consistent with the overall objective of providing members of TDCJ with skills that they can put to work in the free world immediately upon leaving our system. Upon completion of the classroom and on-the-job training, students earn a certificate and become registered apprentices through the U.S. Department of Labor. Today, we are joined by Ms. Cora Gleason, who's here with us at the podium, who is Wyndham's horseshoeing and entrepreneurship instructor, who will share more insights into this unique program. Just some quick background on Ms. Gleason. Prior to joining the Wyndham team in February of 2024, Ms. Gleason, you worked in the equine industry as a farrier and a veterinary assistant with a focus in equine reproduction. We understand that you graduated from Lubbock Christian University in 2021 with a bachelor's degree in animal science. Following your undergraduate studies, you attended Texas Horseshoeing School and completed hundreds of hours of relevant coursework. You went on to attend the Colorado State University for Continuing Education to become certified in equine reproduction management, and we also understand that you were born and raised on a ranch in the great town of Abilene, Texas, where you developed your passion for working with animals. We also understand that in your free time, like many of us, you and your husband enjoy spending time outdoors, including through hunting and fishing, and that you also spend quality time working on both of your family's ranches. Ms. Gleason, the board extends its thanks for your dedication, not only in helping qualified Wyndham students obtain a marketable employment skill, but in passing along to others a Texas-centered and time-honored profession. So, would you like to share a few thoughts with us today on the program that you helped to lead?
Yes. Thank you all so much for allowing me to be here. I'm so honored to get to let you all know what we've been up to out at the barn, where most people don't know we're at. It is a fun environment. It is not climate-controlled, but it is still fun. This is a great town to be in. It's a lot more comfortable here weather-wise, so we enjoy that. Working with the horses is just something that I absolutely love to do, and so I have really grown to love this program, and working for Wyndham has given me the opportunity to do that and grow not only myself, but pour into others. The apprenticeship curriculum is divided into four key areas, each focused on ensuring the health and well-being of horses while providing apprentices with a practical, up-to-date experience in the farrier industry. The first area covers the general care of horses, including teaching students how to maintain proper feeding and hydration schedules. They also develop skills in exercising the horses to support both their physical and mental health, grooming techniques such as washing, brushing, clipping, trimming coats, and cleaning ears. There are also part of training. Additionally, they are trained to use safe methods for transferring animals between areas of the facility. Apprentices are introduced to the relevant safety standards, including the importance of personal protective clothing and equipment while working. In the next phase, students learn to administer basic health care and medical treatments and to recognize horse behaviors. They are trained to mix food, medications, or supplements according to the instructions and prescriptions, ensuring proper equine nutrition and health requirements. Apprentices are also responsible for maintaining a clean and organized facility. This includes disinfecting animal quarters and equipment like saddles and bridals. The third area emphasizes the documentation and monitoring of the horse's health. Apprentices learn to track essential details such as treatments administered and medications provided. They also begin developing essential horseshoeing skills such as identifying common lameness issues, understanding hoof anatomy, and practicing techniques like cold shoeing, shoe shaping, and finishing. Students gain familiarity with technical veterinary terms, including atomical directions such as posterior, distal, and proximal, enabling them to communicate effectively with veterinarians. Apprentices learn to interpret x-rays, a critical skill for assessing and addressing health problems. Additionally, they are trained to exercise safe work practices, such as using proper posture when lifting and ensuring stable footing while walking and shoeing horses, to maintain both their safety and the animal's well-being. The final part of the curriculum focuses on entrepreneurship, where apprentices learn the planning, structure, and risks involved in starting and running their own business. This section covers key communication and leadership skills, preparing students to succeed not only as farriers, but also as potential business owners. Apprentices explore the role of leadership and emphasize critical problem-solving skills, teaching students how to address production and personal challenges, collaborate effectively with colleagues, and interact professionally with supervisors. Students learn to tailor their communication to different audiences, whether speaking with a veterinarian, a pet owner, or the owner of a performance horse, recognizing the varying levels of technical understanding required. Effective communication is especially crucial for those pursuing self-employment, as it fosters trust and professionalism. Additionally, the program offers open pathways for advancement in other areas of animal health, broadening career opportunities. The employment outlook for farriers in Texas is strong, driven by the state's thriving equine industry, including rodeo, ranching, and recreational horse ownership. With the increased demand for skilled hoof care professionals and the limited pool of trained farriers, job prospects remain favorable, particularly for those with formal training and certifications such as individuals in this program.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gleason, and I'll say, we know where you are, because, as you know, a number of us have been out in the barn.
Yes.
And as a matter of fact, I think I remember having to hold Ambassador Sib back from reaching over and grabbing the hind leg of a horse and trying to assist in the installation of a horseshoe, if I remember correctly, and only in the way that I always have to hold Ambassador Sib back for this. I'm sure other board members have questions for you, but let me ask you, bottom line, is obtaining a professional skill to be a farrier a pathway that can help support not only the individual student out in the free world, but also his or her family?
Absolutely. You can provide for your family, which I push very strongly in the class, that you can't do that here. But get out there. You can make as much money as you want to. It's making the choice to go out there and hustle and want to, even if you don't make it a full-time job, if you just want to do it on the weekends, when you have a birthday coming up, Christmas, stuff for the kids, it can be an extra source of side income.
All right. Thank you very much. Other board members?
I just had a question. What are some of, I know they can be employed by rodeos, I guess, throughout the state, but who are some of the other companies or organizations who would hire our students? And what is the percentage of those students actually getting hired by companies that's coming out of our program?
I would say, on the farrier side, it's more of, they would run their own business. It would just be them. Maybe they take on a younger person who wants to help hold horses or, you know, want to learn about the industry. Really, it's them going to veterinary clinics. They kind of, in a sense, contract themselves out to stables, to barns. It's really an all-in-who-you-know kind of industry. You get one really good client, and that client tells their friend, and that client tells their friend. So, I stress that client communication is so important, because people remember if they liked you and if you were able to communicate with them effectively. Veterinarians, they get paid way too much to bend over and do this kind of work, so they would rather find somebody that they trust that can do this kind of work and read x-rays and take care of any health problems. That puts you a step ahead, and just being able to communicate effectively on time. Because, in a sense, I also press that the owners don't have to know what your history is. They just need to know who you are when you show up, and if you showed up on time, if you communicated that you were on your way or running late or anything like that. So, it's not so much of a, they get hired by a corporation or by a, you know, a big company or anything. It's more of them individually outsourcing themselves, because the horses don't care what their history looks like. The owners don't have to know. It is purely on them and how they want to present themselves in this industry.
But are we keeping up with the people who have actually graduated from the program to understand or to know what they're doing now? Are they actually employed in the field, or they decided, oh, I couldn't make it, and so now I moved on to something else? Do we have any idea of how many people are really sticking to it and who's actually performing in this particular area?
That is a great question. I also had those questions, because I have a hard time keeping track of people when they leave from my class. The first class I had, I had eight students. It was very small. I'm a first-time teacher, so, you know, just from what I could control. So, eight students. Of the eight, they all graduated about September. They were in from about late April to September, and they all came from outside units. So, they came in from, I had a guy from a unit in Abilene. They were just kind of all over the place in livestock, and they were supposed to go back and work under the apprenticeship program, and out of the eight, four of them left. Three of them went to a program. One went straight home. And one of the guys, I know, he is working, I think, on the weekends doing it, and then the other three are in their program right now. And then, I've got four other ones who are at their units working, and they have, from what I have been told, they're working in the livestock industry, shoeing horses daily for their units.
I just wanted to add that this is a fairly new program, so as she mentioned, the apprenticeship, or you mentioned, I believe, is about a two-year program. So, the people who, I assume, get parole votes and whatnot are going to the community, and it's good to hear that one of them is working there. But she will provide the instruction, and then they'll go work on the TDCJ farms with the horses to get their apprenticeship hours. So, many of them, we won't have any outcomes for two years until they finish the apprenticeship program. And you've worked with us since, how long's it been now?
The class started late April of this year.
Okay. So, she's very new with us, but very happy to have her. I actually learned a lot of new things today. I'm not sure about you all.
So, let me just ask you. My brother has a degree in farying from Sol Ross State University, and he used to tell me that they got all kinds of calls at the universities from ranchers in the area, big properties, lots of horses, about anybody up at the university who could come help them with the farying, because they just couldn't find, they couldn't find people to do it. It was, I don't know if he called it kind of a dying art, that there was, it was difficult getting people involved in the program, but I wonder if reaching out to some of our universities that are in the agricultural rural livestock areas that might, yeah, that might be willing to give some of our people some contacts with some of the big ranchers that are apparently looking for people to do this. Anyway, it's a thought.
Absolutely. I mean, for me, you know, just being in this industry, I know that there's a huge demand for it. It's just knowing how to find those people, people from the universities. They'll be calling vet clinics, boarding stables, universities that have, you know, either a rodeo team or, you know, know that they have contacts. They have to know somebody, you know? It's just having somebody that will show up is the hard part for them to find.
And it made my brother crazy, because he couldn't take the money for it. It all went to Sol Ross, so he was quite irritated.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, Judge Johnson, where we live in northeast Texas, there's a lot of small farms, independent, with horses. And in our geographic region, there was not but one or two farriers. And in our geographic region, there was not but one or two farriers. And they apprenticed into it. And they've had some health problems. And people are posting back to your social media thing all over Facebook wanting a farrier. And it's typically a mobile trade. They, like, we had one, they come to your house. They bring their tools. They bring their truck. They do it there. But with the right advertising in the right area, you don't have to have a big ranch. The one that we used was full every day, just from local farms, ranches, hobby farms, and could work seven days a week. So, big deal is to get the guys, if they're from a certain area, to get on social media. Let them know they do it. And like you said, once you land one vocal person, do a good job for one ranch, the word gets out. And scies the limit for them. And it's pretty much a cash trade. They can make a lot of money doing it.
And I think that was maybe what I'm trying to get to, is I think that if we know where they can be employed, we'll probably have more students interested in going into the trade. But if they think, wow, you know, can I really make money? Where can I get a job? But if we can really get all that type of information you talked about, Dr. Baru, in terms of what all the opportunities are for employment, you'll probably have people knocking down your doors trying to get into your program because they know they can make a lot of money. And there are opportunities there.
Yeah, and one idea, I guess, would be we have outstanding support for entrepreneurship programs generally. So to make sure that, to all y'alls point, that these students are maybe exposed to the kind of the business planning part of, and marketing in the way that our board members are suggesting. So maybe that's one practical suggestion to try to get this program, which you're doing a great job of getting started, to put it into overdrive.
Chairman, I have two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
One is, because it was mentioned, I have a friend who's a farrier. And I know he makes a lot of money. But I don't know how much money he makes, and I won't ask him. But can I ask you, what can a farrier make?
So I have personal clients that I go home and do on the weekends. About every six weeks is when you have to go back. So it's kind of like, once you get one job, you know you're getting money coming in, at least from that person, every six weeks. So that's a nice thing to know. But I've made several hundred dollars on weekends. I mean, it really is, it's how hard I feel like working, how much free time I maybe have on a weekend. For one horse, four sets of, or a full set of shoes on the front and the back, just standard, nothing fancy, I charge about $120. And it takes me about an hour, hour and a half. So I'm worth an hour. You know, I'm worth about $120 an hour.
That's pretty good. And then, can you tell me, where is your program located? I don't know. I haven't been there yet. And I'm going to someday because I just love horses and I appreciate the work you do.
Yeah, it's at the Wynn Unit at the Colt Barn.
The Wynn Unit, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, sir. Ambassador Sib.
Chairman, your comment prompted me to ask you the question about training. Four thousand hours, it's a long time to be trained. And I'm not, I wouldn't hurt $4,000. But I'm always excited to get into something new. That's why the chairman sometimes holds me back. And is there an accelerated course for somebody who knows nothing about horse and horseshoeing to get it done, like, in four hours instead of four thousand hours like me? You know, I wouldn't be able to spend four hours. And the next question, is there any discount for senior people like me?
I would say, so not the whole 4,000. It's supposed to be a two-year-long program. The likelihood of my students staying, I think, in the system for two years. I work with all trustees, so they see parole, I think, every year. And so they have the chance of, you know, getting that program or whatever that looks like for them in their case. So this is something that they can finish on the outside if they choose to go work in an agricultural industry. But it's supposed to be a two-year thing. They are in my class for six hours a day. And then they typically, a lot of my students will stay after class and work, you know, cleaning stalls, feeding the horses. We have lots and lots of new babies out there. And so they need constant, hands-on from people. So they have those good experiences. And so they stay and they work about nine or 10 hours a day, you know, along with my six-hour class. They'll stay, and I keep track of their hours. And so they could essentially hit that 4,000 early on. They're not going to spend 4,000 hours underneath a horse every day. So it's kind of, it's a whole summary of, you know, what it takes to own and to care for a horse.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gliezen, for your presentation and for your work. We appreciate you. The next item on our agenda is a presentation on recruitment and retention strategies. Wyndham's Human Resources Administrator Maggie Lima and Communications Program Coordinator Vanessa Dotson will be presenting today. I see you joining us at the podium. And when you're ready, please proceed.
Good morning, Chairman Nichols, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Hartman. My name is Vanessa Dotson, and I am the Program Coordinator here on the Communications Team, responsible for overseeing the progress of the 2030 Plan. Co-presenting with me today is Maggie Lima, our Human Resource Administrator. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to provide an update on our recruitment and retention efforts within the district. So the purpose of recruitment and retention is to increase applicant outreach and engagement. It is also to enhance employee satisfaction and to promote an inclusive and supportive work culture. To reach these qualified candidates, Wyndham is using a variety of platforms and partnerships, boosting job visibility through community events, collaborations with educational institutions, and digital marketing. To improve employee retention, we're enhancing the onboarding process, implementing mentorships, and offering tuition reimbursement. Very excited for that one. We are also conducting annual staff satisfaction surveys. And this year, we were able to do that through our third-party vendor. These initiatives are designed to create a supportive, growth-oriented environment and improve overall job satisfaction. So Wyndham School District has implemented a comprehensive recruitment approach to attract a diverse and qualified applicant pool. The key methods we're using are outreach events. We're using employee referral programs, digital marketing campaigns, and valuable partnerships with local colleges, universities, and other state agencies. Wyndham participates in job fairs across the state to connect directly with prospective candidates. These events are allowing us to interact with potential hires face-to-face. We're able to answer questions that they may have and promote the district's missions and values. The district also engages the local community through outreach events such as Huntsville's Annual Fair on the Square, connecting with individuals who may not normally attend a traditional job fair or even know about Wyndham School District. Updated branding materials, including new flyers, banners, and promotional items, are presenting a cohesive look that will align with our vision, enhancing awareness and visibility. Additionally, our employee referral program is rewarding staff with up to eight hours of administrative leave when they recruit a successful teacher candidate. So that helps to effectively leverage our employee network as well. Wyndham is using a range of digital platforms as well to reach a broad candidate audience across the state. We agree. Post, repost, share with you, Ms. Zeicher. Through targeted marketing and engaging content, we're attracting a diverse applicant pool. Earlier this year, the Communications Department launched a recruitment video strategically designed to enhance awareness of our career opportunities within Wyndham. So I am pleased to present this video with you now.
Wyndham School District serves men and women residing within the Texas Department of Criminal Justice across the state, with the mission of, in partnership with its stakeholders, providing quality educational opportunities. Are you ready to make a difference where it matters most?
Working in education and corrections isn't just a job. It's an opportunity to transform lives and build brighter futures.
Every day, I see the potential for change in our students. Witnessing their growth and commitment is incredibly rewarding.
Teaching students in incarceration challenges me to be my best and make a real difference.
At Wyndham School District, you have the chance to inspire and empower individuals who are eager for knowledge and ready to establish the foundation for a productive future.
My teacher believes in me and gives me hope for a better future.
Wyndham is helping me obtain the tools I need to succeed upon reentry. The opportunities available through Wyndham have changed my life.
Working in education and corrections isn't always easy, but the impact we make is undeniable.
Knowing that you're helping individuals break the cycle of incarceration and guiding them to reach their professional and personal goals is incredibly fulfilling.
The career opportunities at Wyndham School District are endless. Visit us online for a full listing of open positions in your area and find the opportunity that is right for you.
Are you ready to make a difference?
Wyndham's partnerships with the Texas Workforce Commission, educational institutes, and TDCJ are essential for our expanding access to skilled candidates. These collaborations provide access to specialized programs, job fairs, broadening our reach to targeted pools of qualified educators and support staff. As of October 31, 2024, the district upholds a 79.6 fill rate for teachers and an 84.7% fill rate for non-teacher staff. Together, these strategies reflect our commitment to building a strong, capable team aligned with Wyndham's mission. To improve retention, we focus on staff satisfaction and growth. Wellness programs that have been spoken about today promote physical, mental, and financial health, while our new tuition reimbursement program supports skill advancement without financial burden. Professional development and alternative certification options offer career growth within Wyndham. Staff recognition programs, including milestone, celebrations, annual service awards, honor dedication, while our annual staff satisfaction survey helps shape processes based on employee input. This year, the Recruitment and Retention Committee, comprising members of all regions, tenures, and positions, was established to address hiring and retention needs with targeted initiatives. The team recommended establishing pathways for advancement and tuition reimbursement, which I'm happy to report that we have implemented both of these suggestions by working with the Texas Education Agency to confirm Wyndham as an approved district for teacher, counselor, principal, internship, and practicum activities, and a process for employees to secure reimbursement for eligible education cost. We've also restructured our onboarding to create a more welcoming new hire experience and revamped our human resources team for an improved support at every career stage. Through these efforts, we're building a workplace that attracts and retains dedicated staff and advanced Wyndham's mission. As we look to the future, Wyndham School District is committed in building a workforce that is engaged, valued, and empowered to grow. By digitizing our HR processes, we will streamline candidate experience and improve the entire employee lifecycle. Expanding recruitment partnerships allows us to attract top talent, while increasing professional growth opportunities within the district ensures our staff can thrive and develop. Finally, by continually enhancing our workplace culture, we are fostering an environment where every employee feels a true sense of belonging and purpose. Together, these next steps lay a strong foundation for a future of lasting impact and success. And as we've heard before, as you can see from our slide, Wyndham is active on social media platforms to assist with our recruitment and retention efforts. So don't forget to follow us and tell all your friends. This concludes our report today, and we'll now pause for questions.
Well, thank you for that excellent report, and thank you for all your efforts to improve the recruitment and retention initiatives. And let me ask a question to you all and also to Ms. Hartman. So with respect to our fill rates currently, just a hair under 80% for teachers, how do we compare with other districts across the state? I mean, we've got, because I know every district has some challenges in terms of staffing.
I was hoping you would ask that, and I'm making eye contact with Robert now because these numbers were from October. And the last time I looked, we had made it to 80%. The 79.6 was really bothering me.
All right, all right.
So, yes, and we've met, we actually had a meeting with the legislative office recently that is very involved in education with public schools. And they said that we're actually doing better than many of them. And we are not hiring uncertified teachers. Many of the districts have started the process of hiring teachers that are not yet certified. We are certainly open to exploring that in locations if we have a very severe staffing problem. But I think it speaks highly of the district that we have not had to go down that pathway yet because it is difficult. And I know because I came on as an uncertified teacher when I was new in the corrections and environment. And it was very challenging to learn classroom management strategies and instructional strategies while I was there with 25 youthful learners.
Right.
Yeah, so I think that we're doing quite well.
Okay, but we're not going to rest on our laurels.
No, we are not. We're not.
Okay. Other questions on the presentation? If not, thank you very much for your efforts and your presentation. The next item on our agenda is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the Wyndham School District 2025-2029 Strategic Plan. Wyndham's Division Director of Instruction, Mr. Kevin Sonic, will be presenting today. Mr. Sonic, you're here at the podium. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chairman Nichols, board members, and Superintendent Hartman. In your binders behind Tab F, you will find a copy of the Wyndham School District's proposed 2529 Strategic Plan. In July 2024, staff from across the district gathered for an in-depth review and discussion of the district's mission, vision, goals, strategies, and objectives. Team members representing each department in the Administration Building and campus-based staff, such as principals, student advisors, teachers, and administrative assistants, joined the discussion to share their unique perspectives. During this review session, staff were randomly grouped to ensure each table included a diverse mix of regions, disciplines, and levels of experience. Thank you again, Ms. Zeicher, for attending and supporting the collaborative conversation. In the proposed plan, you will see the district's mission and vision have been revised. Wyndham's updated mission reads, "The mission of Wyndham School District is to guide, motivate, and empower students through innovative educational pathways." The updated vision reads, "The vision of Wyndham School District is to be a leader in education by inspiring excellence and transforming lives." These updates emphasize a more focused approach to engaging and guiding students as they navigate diverse educational pathways, solidifying Wyndham's position as a leader in education. The proposed plan outlines five goals and specific objectives and strategies to guide fulfillment. The primary revisions of the strategic plan include a focus on high-quality instruction in an increased number of programs, professional development of staff, supporting enhanced retention and career growth within the district, technology advancements to include improved bandwidth and connectivity, and appropriate placement of graduates in their pathway of interest, apprenticeship, post-secondary, and employment. All district staff were provided the opportunity to review the draft plan, and all feedback was carefully considered for implementation. I would like to express my gratitude to the Wyndham team for their hard work in revising and refining the district's strategic plan. These efforts have produced a meaningful, thorough result that will guide the district for years to come towards staff and student success. I will now pause for any questions that you may have.
Just a quick question to make sure that I'm keeping up with the right terminology. Does this strategic plan incorporate the same language, person-first language suggestions that have been adopted elsewhere?
Yes, it does. And until Chapter 19 is updated fully, we can bracket, and that is an acceptable format for a person-centered language.
So, in other words, there's some legislative changes that need to, that if they're made, will bring state law up to speed on these changes as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you very much for your presentation. Other questions or comments from the board? I see Judge Johnson?
No, I'll just make a motion in a minute.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you for including me. It was a really excellent experience, and I've seen iterations of this and seen it improve over, not that it was ever bad, but I really enjoyed the process, and the team collectively has done great. I see some of the people that were at my table, the best table, during this planning that are here, and everyone was really wonderful to work with, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any additional comments or comments, Ms. Hartman? Any additional comments on this?
Sure, and this has been bothering me a bit, so I'm just going to ask it on public record since I said it on public record earlier. There are parts in the strategic plan that talk about recruitment, retention, messaging, which is one of the themes that we've had today, getting out there on social media. And I said we're going to blast the colleges, and I don't know if that's a positive term on social media. What should I be saying?
I think that's appropriate.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's an appropriate term.
I just wanted to make sure. So I really asked that to demonstrate that the superintendent is also still learning and excited about the strategic plan and excited about continuing my post-secondary education at some point, so I feel a little bit better now that you've said that.
Yeah, although contrary to popular belief, I'm actually not of the cool generation anymore, so there are younger than me around here that might know better.
We think you're cool.
Thanks.
And regardless of our age, we are all learning, Ms. Hartman. We all continue to learn, and if we're not learning, then I think there's a problem. So we appreciate, Mr. Sonic, your presentation today and what appears to be a kind of a mission statement that will carry the Wyndham School District forward effectively through 2029. So, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That completes our agenda for today, and I-
Motion. I have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I should have asked for new business, so it seems we have a new business. We have a motion that Vice Chair Johnson would like to make.
Yes. I move that the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees approve the Wyndham School District 2025-2029 strategic plan as presented.
Well, of course you would move on that. I appreciate, and I apologize for my oversight. So I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. I have a second from Ms. Zeicher. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, I think we do complete our agenda for today, and I again thank all of you for coming here, to be here in person with us at the Huntsville Prison Museum or attending virtually. And if I could just take a short moment of personal privilege, as we roll through the holiday season, I want to extend on behalf of each and every one of our board members, our trustees, the very best holiday wishes and thoughts to each and every one of our extremely valued members of the Wyndham School District team. And we hope that each and every one of you has the opportunity to take the end of the year, to reflect, understand the tremendous contribution that you're making to the state, and also to spend that very valuable time with family and friends. So with that, I will say that the next meeting of the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees will take place on Friday, February 21st, 2025, in Austin, Texas. And there being no further business, the 345th meeting of the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees is now adjourned. It is 9:03 a.m. All right. Good morning again to all in attendance in person, as well as to those attending virtually. The 238th meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice is reconvened in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the Open Meetings Act. It is 9:19 a.m. During this meeting, the board will be conducting business from the agenda posted in the Texas Register. Members of the board present for this meeting include myself, Eric Nichols, Vice Chair Faith Johnson, Secretary Dr. Rodney Burrow, Judge Molly Francis, Ambassador Sishan Shiv- Secretary Dr. Rodney Burrow, Judge Molly Francis, Ambassador Sishan Shiv, Pastor Nate Sprinkle, General Bill Welch, Sidney Zeiger, and Tom Fordice. A quorum of the Board is present, and the meeting is now declared open. This meeting is being conducted in person here at the Prison Museum in Huntsville, and is also being broadcast on the Texas Department of Criminal Justice YouTube channel. It is 9:19 a.m. As you know from prior meetings, we use the invocation portion of our meeting to start us off on the right foot, and also to spotlight the great work done by chaplains across the TDCJ system. I now ask Pastor Nate Sprinkle to introduce Chaplain Randall Lowe, who joins us today from the Huntsville Unit, and he'll be offering a word of prayer as we start our meeting.
Yes, thank you Chairman Nichols. Before we begin with a word of prayer, I'd like to introduce Chaplain Randall Lowe. Chaplain Lowe has been with the Texas Department of Criminal Justice for 12 years, and currently serves at the Huntsville Unit here in Huntsville, Texas. Chaplain Lowe graduated from Houston Baptist University with a Bachelor of Science in Economics. He also earned a Master of Divinity degree from Southwestern Baptist Theological Seminary, and a Doctor of Ministry degree from Trinity Evangelical Divinity School. Chaplain Lowe has pastored churches in British Columbia and Texas now for 34 years. He serves as the pastor of Calvary Baptist Church in Trinity, Texas since 2004. And finally, Chaplain Lowe has conducted almost 700 inmate funerals, and has assisted with inmate families through the execution process. Chaplain Lowe, would you please do us the honor of opening our meeting with a word of prayer today?
Let's pray. Most holy God, first, we want to offer our gratitude and thanksgiving. We thank you for all of our family and friends and colleagues. We thank you for our health and well-being. Lord, we also thank you for our country in which we live, and for the great state of Texas. In addition, Lord, we come to you with many petitions. Recognizing that you've set before us a great task, we ask that you would guide us in this responsibility. We know that we have before us the lives of so many inmates and staff that we care for, and we pray that we would be good stewards over all that we're given. We especially ask your blessing today upon this board as they meet, that you would give them guidance and wisdom and direction at all the questions and decisions that they must make. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Chaplain Lowe.
Amen. And thank you Pastor Sprinkle, and thank you Chaplain Lowe for your invocation, and also for your dedicated service to TDCJ and the men and women incarcerated in our system. As a courtesy to speakers and guests in the meeting, please turn your electronic devices to the silent or vibrate mode. We appreciate that. And as I said earlier in the Wyndham School District Board of Trustees meeting, we very much appreciate everyone being here today, including any public officials and/or staff representatives who are with us, present physically, or watching online through the YouTube channel. We appreciate all of your contributions to our great state. The Texas Board of Criminal Justice is committed to providing an opportunity for public presentations on posted agenda topics, as well as for public comments on issues within its jurisdiction, as provided in Board Rule 151.4. Persons interested in speaking today were required to complete and submit a registration card at least 10 minutes prior to the meeting's posted start time. As no cards were received prior to the required deadline, the Board will not be hearing public presentations on posted agenda topics today, or public comments on issues within the Board's jurisdiction. Let us begin next with recognitions. And so, for our first recognition, we would like to recognize Consul General Valerie Baraban of the French consulate in Houston. Ms. Baraban, would you please join us at the podium? Now, recently, first of all, thank you for being here. And Ms. Baraban, we understand that recently you and your colleagues joined TDCJ staff for a tour of one of TDCJ's facilities. I don't know, do we have any photographs of that for today? I don't know that we do, unfortunately. But we, I can tell you, those staff were honored to share with our representatives from the Republic of France in Texas, the work that is being done at a TDCJ facility, including the programming available to the TDCJ population. On November the 19th, these members of the French consulate joined Ambassador Sishan Shiv and Mr. Jason Clark for a tour that highlighted TDCJ's commitment to public safety, rehabilitation, and innovation. I understand, Consul General, that your day began with a visit to the George Bush Presidential Museum in College Station, which was a very appropriate stop in the tour, considering the mutual interest in effective leadership and diplomacy. Next, the delegation toured the O.L. Luther Unit in Navasota, where Mr. Clark presented on TDCJ's missions and initiatives. Following this, Luther Unit Warden Deborah Booker and her staff provided a tour of the facility, including a tour of the exceptional work being done in the education and food service departments, and in vocational, I see, I need to learn, CTE training areas, including the stainless steel plant. Now, during this tour, the group had the opportunity to meet one of our life coaches, also, as I understand it, at the unit. Life coaches, as the Consul General learned, and as many of you know, are women and men from the TDCJ population who have stepped forward to engage in life coaching training that benefits both them and the peers to whom they reach out. And so, as a life coach, as I understand it, Ambassador Shiv, you can comment on this later, this life coach shared with the group his inspiring journey, and what led him to this meaningful role, and the work he does in the system to guide and empower fellow inmates. I also understand that the group visited George, which, as I understand it, is a lemon tree donated to the unit by Ambassador Shiv in honor of President Bush, before wrapping up the tour with a stop at the unit kennels, where you all had the chance to meet the security canines and horses. Some in the delegation, as I understand it, and I don't know if you were among this group, even went for a quick ride on some of those horses. So, Consul General Baraban, we are grateful that you and your team took the time to engage with TDCJ, and to foster an opportunity to exchange ideas and build connections between the organizations we serve. The French consulate's engagement and interest in the work of TDCJ, and of the Wyndham School District reaffirm our shared commitment to fostering innovation and collaboration across our planet. And so, from this board, we say merci beaucoup for your engagement and your very important role, and that you and your team took the time to see for yourselves the work being done in the TDCJ system. Our doors are always open to nos amis de France. Would you care to share a few words with us?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for your very kind words, and also for having me today. You could share information about the amazing day that we had at the Luther Unit, and I would like to express my gratitude to the TCDJ and all the people who were very instrumental to the visit of myself and my team, and in particular Ambassador Shiv. And as you said, it was very, very interesting for us to get insight about what you're doing, how you work, and you will find in the Consulate General of France always a partner to engage into that discussion. So, thank you very much for having me today.
Excellent. Ambassador Shiv, would you care to share a few thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add that George, the lemon tree, we planted in 2022, was actually named for three presidents: Josh Washington, Josh H.W. Bush, and Josh W. Bush. And George is growing very well, thanks to the care of the Warden and the team.
Given his namesake, given the tree's- His namesakes, we would expect nothing less.
Exactly. And if you remember, when we were at ACA in January, I think the Warden was in front of the accreditation.
Yes, sir.
And she mentioned that George, she said, mention George, and the chairman of the committee asked, "How is George doing?" And George is striving, so we have to take care of George. But I want to add one more thing. The Consul General is very modest. She is the dean of the Consular Corps, which is, I think you have 90 countries in Houston, right? And she has to be in charge of all these 90 countries. And you told me that the last Consul General was from Iraq and Afghanistan. Is that correct?
Yeah, the new positions are created, so for Iraq and Kuwait, this is the two latest. And you're right, Ambassador Shiv, saying that about 90 countries are represented in the Consular Corps in Houston. This is the third-largest Consular Corps in the United States, after New York and Los Angeles.
Well, thank you for your leadership in the diplomatic community in Houston, and thank you again for joining us today. And you may feel free to bring your 90 colleagues to TDCJ. As the chairman said, the door is always open.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I would next like to take a moment to recognize Ambassador Shiv. Many of you know him as a dedicated member of our Board, and of the Board of Trustees for the Wyndham School District, but his contributions to public service extend far beyond that. Ambassador Shiv also serves in the Civil Air Patrol, the civilian auxiliary of the United States Air Force, where he holds the rank of Lieutenant Colonel. Recently, Ambassador Shiv had the honor of participating in an extraordinary flight that marked a historic moment in aviation. I would like to invite Ambassador Shiv to share a little bit about this historic flight with all of us. Ambassador Shiv, again, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We all remember 9/11, which is a tragic day in our history, but not just our country, but also of the world. On 9/11, there were 4,005 planes in the skies of the United States. All of them were ordered to land within a few hours, except for one plane. It's a Cessna 172 that belonged to the Civil Air Patrol. At the time, it was based in Islip, Long Island. A plane with a crew of three was sent to Ground Zero to take high-resolution photos of the remains of the World Trade Center of the terrorist attack. That plane is now in Dayton, Ohio, at the National Air Force Museum at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. Before it was taken there, I have the privilege to fly that plane in Connecticut. It was later transferred from New York to Connecticut. And I wanted to do something in honor of George Bush, whose centennial was in June, June 12th this year. He was a pilot also, as many of you remember. He was shot down in the Pacific on September 2nd, 1944. So, it was the 80th anniversary this year of his last mission in the Pacific. And in the centennial, many of us who worked for him at the White House and at the administration were reunited in College Station. And I've been thinking about doing something in his honor, so I found this plane in Connecticut. And the Regional Commander of the Northeast Region, which includes all of New England, plus New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, invited me to go there and fly. So, I was the last crew of that flight. We took off from an airport called Brainerd, which is near Hartford. We flew over Connecticut, New York, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts. This plane, which the tail number is 44 Lima, was the first aircraft of the Civil Air Patrol that fly, that escorts submarines from Groton. If you know Connecticut, you know England, there is a major nuclear submarine base in Groton. And this plane, in addition to having the historic role in taking pictures on Ground Zero, was also the first aircraft to escort nuclear submarines from Groton into the seas. So, it was quite an emotional flight for me. I have had quite a lot of emotional flying, including the one on Air Force One when I accompanied President Bush on his last earthly journey to Washington after he passed away. But this one was emotional in the sense that we landed in New Haven, where I came here as a refugee in 1976, in all that flight. And on that flight, I carried a lot of mementos, including flags and portraits. And we have here, Mayte and Brittany and Jill put them all in a frame there. And I'd like to encourage you to have a look at that. They are portraits of President Bush, the two President Bush and portrait of the family. And I challenge you, if you recognize all of them in that photo, I would take you to a steak dinner somewhere. So, be sure you focus on the, because you recognize some, but I doubt you recognize all of them. But let's see. When we saw the governor on September 16th, I asked him if he recognized those people. He said he recognized most of them. But the other point, that is connection to TDCJ, is that in 2022, I visited Hilltop. I visited Hilltop, and I made a flag, a flag of Texas. I was, of course, instructed, and I kept that flag with me. I took that flag on that flight. And you, Mr. Chairman, and Jill, Brittany, and I, we went to see the governor to present that flag. He doesn't have a U.S. flag. He has a Texas flag. Here we have a U.S. flag. So, I want to present this frame to you for the Board. And Mayte told me that we have plenty of wall in our board room. If we don't have, we may build more walls. Just no pun intended.
And we will make an honored space for this. We appreciate you, Ambassador Shiv, and we appreciate your continued efforts to make sure that we never forget that terrible day in our nation's history, and all those who perished, and the families of those who were left behind. So, we appreciate everything that you do, and we will definitely display that proudly in our board offices. Thank you, sir.
If I may borrow you, we'll go there and take a picture.
Of course, of course. Continuing with our recognitions, the Board of Criminal Justice recognizes TDCJ employees who have dedicated 25, 30, 35, 40, and 45 years of service to the state of Texas. And as men and women across our system know, I always ask, you know, "How long have you been with TDCJ?" And I always tell them, I warn them, "You're going to be on my list at some point in time, because we have so many great employees who have sustained that effort of service for those time periods." These individuals represent the strong commitment of this agency's staff system-wide, our Board, and of course Executive Director Brian Colly. inmates in TDCJ custody. Our actions of valor, valor recipients have gone above and beyond to exemplify the agency's values of integrity, courage, perseverance, and commitment. Their actions have made a significant impact within the Transportation Department and how they contribute to the overall safety and well-being of our communities. I would now like to call upon Mr. Bill Lewis, as he will introduce and recognize these individuals who responded professionally, effectively, and proactively to a June eleventh, twenty twenty-four transportation bus fire. Mr. Lewis, if you are ready, please proceed.
Chairman Nichols, Mr. Collier, board members, it's an honor to be here this morning and talk about two individuals that deserve the Valor Award. Heroic. And I'll start with Officer Aaron Cutrell. Texas Department of Criminal Justice is proud, is proud to present you with the Valor Award. Purpose of this award is to recognize you for the personal bravery you displayed in the face of adversity. You took immediate action to address a potentially dire situation and handled it with composure and fervor to ensure the safety of everyone. While conducting a transport of twenty-five inmates on June the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the bus experienced mechanical failure, resulting in large amounts of smoke emanating from the vehicle. Your immediate action ensured everyone's safe removal from the vehicle was, before it was engulfed in flames. Your security mindset and swift action prevented a tragic event from occurring. Texas Department of Criminal Justice thanks you for exhibiting the core values of integrity, courage, perseverance, and commitment. Officer Chinadu Enzewa. Officer Enzewa, the Texas Department of Criminal Justice is proud to present you with the Valor Award. The purpose of this award is to recognize you for the personal bravery you displayed in the face of adversity. You took immediate action to address a potentially dire situation and handled it with composure and fervor to ensure the safety of everyone. While conducting a transport of twenty-five inmates on June the eleventh, the bus experienced mechanical failure. Large amounts of smoke were emanating from the vehicle. Your immediate action ensured everyone's safe removal before the vehicle was engulfed in flames. Your security mindset, swift action prevented a tragic event from occurring. Texas Department of Criminal Justice thanks you for exhibiting the core values of integrity, courage, perseverance, and commitment. And I'd like to add that this occurred on Interstate forty-five, right outside of Centerville, Texas, on one of our major thoroughfares. As the bus, the staff members saw smoke coming from the bus, pulled over, they got their cones out, actually had sense of urgency to look at it and tell that the bus was, appeared to be starting to be on fire. Automatically, they stepped into action, took those inmates off of the bus, evacuated them on the side of a road of a busy interstate, got them away from the bus. Within two minutes, local law enforcement arrived. But they got them to a point where they could secure them, take care of them. They saved lives of those inmate population and their staff as well. So thank you for recognizing them.
Well, Officer Cutrell and Officer Chinadu, I had a chance to visit with you before the meeting and express my views to you privately, but I will say publicly on behalf of this board that your selfless efforts exemplify the highest standards of conduct for TDCJ employees, and first and foremost, the integrity of your work and your dedication to the safety of those, of those whom we serve. And so on behalf of our entire board, I would ask that all of us stand and give you a rousing standing ovation. Thank you again to you both. For our next recognitions, TDCJ Executive Director Brian Collier will be recognizing several individuals today. Mr. Collier, if you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman Nichols, and good morning, everyone. I want to do it, identify or recognize this morning some individuals that you know, but also some individuals that are in different chairs as we have put our new structure in place and kind of recognize those. The first I want to recognize this morning is Ron Stepha, if he could come to the podium, please. With the recent organizational structure, restructure of the agency, the position of Deputy Executive Director was deleted, and two of three deputy chiefs were created to help administer the agency. One of these three positions is Chief Financial Officer Ron Stepha. Although Ron has served in our Chief Financial Officer role since two thousand twenty, I wanted to introduce him today as we kind of begin this new chapter. Mr. Stepha joined the Texas Department of Criminal Justice in nineteen ninety-two, working as an administrative technician in the Human Resources Division. Ron promoted throughout the agency, holding positions in executive services and contracts and procurement, where he served as the Program Administrator, Deputy Director, and later the Director of Contracts and Procurement. He promoted to Deputy Chief Financial Officer in two thousand and eight, and in two thousand twenty-one, Ron was selected to serve as the agency's Chief Financial Officer. In this position, he oversees the agency's four-point-three billion dollar budget and plays a pivotal role in developing our legislative appropriation request and manages the day-to-day operations and finance. With our new restructure, he will have several divisions that he will coordinate with on a regular basis that will also be responsible through the CFO's office. Ron earned his Master's of Business Administration from Sam Houston State University in nineteen ninety-three. Ron is an extremely accomplished leader who's highly respected within this agency. His analytical ability combined with his keen understanding of this agency has already, and but will continue to serve us very well. Please join me this morning in recognizing Ron, although he's been our Chief Financial Officer as we take this new chapter on, and he assumes this new role. Just want to recognize him and thank him for his service to the agency.
Mr. Stepha, congratulations, and thank you for your continued service. Would you care to share a few words with us?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Nichols, board members, Mr. Collier. It has been my honor and privilege to serve this agency as its Chief Financial Officer, and I look forward to the opportunities that the reorganization brings as it better positions the agency to move into the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to next ask Bobby Lumpkin if he would come to the podium. This morning, I'd like to recognize Mr. Lumpkin on his recent promotion to the position of Chief Operations Officer for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Mr. Lumpkin has more than thirty-four years of experience with TDCJ, beginning his career as a correctional officer at the Diagnostic Unit, now known as the Bird Unit, in nineteen ninety. He promoted through each correctional rank to Assistant Warden, and in two thousand and three, was selected as the American Correctional Association Manager in the Administrative Review and Risk Management Division. In two thousand and seven, Mr. Lumpkin promoted to Deputy Division Director of the Private Facility Contract Monitoring Oversight Division. And in two thousand and thirteen, he promoted to the Manufacturing, Agribusiness, and Logistics Division as the Division Director. In two thousand and twenty, Mr. Lumpkin was selected to serve as the Correctional Institutions Division Director. Bobby has a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice and Corrections, as well as a Master of Science in Criminal Justice Leadership and Management from Sam Houston State University. Mr. Lumpkin is a key member of our team, as you know, and his operational experience and proven leadership ability will continue to serve this agency well. Please join me in recognizing Mr. Lumpkin on his appointment to Chief Operations Officer for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Bobby, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkin, for your continued contributions to TDCJ. And would you care to share a few words for us?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Collier. Again, Chairman, Vice Chair Johnson, board members. Such an honor to continue to serve this agency, along the fine, phenomenal men and women that make up this agency, and also to serve the, the clients, whether they're in supervision, in, in probation or parole, or those that are incarcerated, the inmates incarcerated within the agency, to continue to serve them in the great state of Texas. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bobby. I'd next like to ask Jason Clark to please come to the podium. This morning, I'd like to recognize Jason Clark on his recent appointment to Chief Programs Officer for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Jason began his career with our agency in two thousand and six as a Public Information Officer. Prior to joining TDCJ, Jason had worked as a reporter, a producer, and a news anchor in television news. In two thousand and thirteen, Jason was promoted to the Director of Public Information, serving as the agency's chief spokesman and the managing our agency communications. In two thousand and seventeen, Mr. Clark was promoted to Deputy Chief of Staff, and in two thousand and eighteen, was promoted to Chief of Staff for the agency. Jason holds a Bachelor's Degree in Broadcast Journalism from Sam Houston State University. As Chief of Staff, Jason led many agency initiatives and worked closely with legislative and leadership officers to help further many of our major projects. He has proven himself to be an innovative self-starter. These skills combined with his strong agency knowledge base will help him serve well in this new position. Please join me this morning as we congratulate Jason on his promotion to Chief Programs Officer for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice.
Congratulations, Mr. Clark, on your new position as Chief Programs Officer. Would you care to share a few words with us?
Chairman, thank you, members, Mr. Collier. I'm just incredibly excited and humbled to, to serve in this role. And my intention is to be as impactful as I can for the men and women that work for us, for crime victims, and for the men and women that are in our custody and care. So thank you so much for trusting in me.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. So that's the chief structure in the agency with our new restructure. But now I want to name or recognize some of the new division directors as part of that restructure as well. I'm going to start. This morning, if I could ask Jennifer Gonzalez to please approach the podium. So within our restructure, many of you know that we separated the Business and Finance Division. And this morning, I'd like to recognize Jennifer Gonzalez on her recent promotion to the Director of the Business and Finance Division. Ms. Gonzalez has more than twenty-three years of experience with the Texas Department of Criminal Justice, beginning her career in two thousand and one as a purchaser in the Contracts and Procurement Department. She continued her career path in Business and Finance, holding the positions of Budget Analyst, Deputy Budget Director, and Director of Accounting and Business Services. In two thousand and twenty, Jennifer was selected to serve as the agency's Deputy Chief Financial Officer. Jennifer has a Bachelor of Business Administration degree from Sam Houston State University, and is currently a candidate for an executive MBA with the Mays Business School at Texas A&amp;M University. Jennifer is a focused leader, and her experience with the business and finance field will serve her well as she establishes this new role. Please join me this morning in congratulating Jennifer on her recent promotion to the Director of the Business and Finance Division for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice.
Ms. Gonzalez, congratulations on being the new Director for the Business and Finance Division. I can speak for all of us on the board to know that we've worked with you over a number of years and know the, firsthand, the contributions that you've made to our agency. And just as a quick aside, an apology to my better half for not doing a whoop when you, when Texas A&amp;M University was mentioned.
Stop it now.
I know. I'm trying, I'm trying. I'm trying to keep the peace at home. Thank you. Would you care to share a few words with us?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Mr. Collier, and of course, the chairman and the board members, for the opportunity to serve as the new Business and Finance Division Director. I'm super excited for the opportunity, looking forward to collaborating with the other divisions and staff, to work toward our agency missions. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Chairman, I'd like to ask Rich Babcock if he could please come to the podium. This morning, I'd like to recognize Rich Babcock on his recent promotion as Director of the newly-created Classification and Inmate Transportation Division. Mr. Babcock began his career in nineteen ninety-seven as a correctional officer at the Darrington Unit, now known as the Memorial Unit, and promoted through the Correctional Series, holding each level to include Assistant and Senior Warden. In two thousand and twenty-one, Rich was selected to serve as the Director of Laundry, Food Service, and Supply in the Correctional Institution Division, and in two thousand and twenty-two, promoted to Deputy Division Director for the Correctional Institutions Division. Mr. Babcock holds a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Business Management from the University of Arizona. Rich will bring a wealth of experience and creativity to this new role in our agency. Please join me this morning as we recognize Rich Babcock on his promotion to the Director of Classification and Inmate Transportation.
Congratulations, Mr. Babcock. I'm being selected as the Director of the Classification and Inmate Transportation Division. Would you care to share a few words with us?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Mr. Collier, and of course, the chairman and the board members, for the opportunity to serve as the new Business and Finance Division Director. I'm super excited for the opportunity, looking forward to collaborating with the other divisions and staff, to work toward our agency missions. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Chairman, I'd like to ask Rich Babcock if he could please come to the podium. This morning, I'd like to recognize Rich Babcock on his recent promotion as Director of the newly-created Classification and Inmate Transportation Division. Mr. Babcock began his career in nineteen ninety-seven as a correctional officer at the Darrington Unit, now known as the Memorial Unit, and promoted through the Correctional Series, holding each level to include Assistant and Senior Warden. In two thousand and twenty-one, Rich was selected to serve as the Director of Laundry, Food Service, and Supply in the Correctional Institution Division, and in two thousand and twenty-two, promoted to Deputy Division Director for the Correctional Institutions Division. Mr. Babcock holds a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Business Management from the University of Arizona. Rich will bring a wealth of experience and creativity to this new role in our agency. Please join me this morning as we recognize Rich Babcock on his promotion to the Director of Classification and Inmate Transportation.
Congratulations, Mr. Babcock. I'm being selected as the Director of the Classification and Inmate Transportation Division. Would you care to share a few words with us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Collier, and the many, many employees that have pushed me up to this level. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve, and looking forward to building a place where all divisions and stakeholders collaborate together to move forward in our goals, our shared goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Chairman, I'd like to ask Rochelle White if she would please come to the podium for my last recognition. This morning, I'd like to recognize Rochelle White on her recent appointment to the position of Chief of Staff for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Ms. White began working for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice in two thousand and twenty-one, serving, serving as the Director of Legal Affairs in the Office of General Counsel. She briefly left the agency to work as a staff attorney for the Harris County Administrative Office of the District Courts this past January, but quickly was lured back to TDCJ and began serving as our Deputy Chief of Staff. Rochelle holds a Juris Doctor Degree from the University of South Carolina School of Law, and a Bachelor of Business Administration in Economics and Spanish from Loyola University in New Orleans. She's a solid, proven leader with a diverse background that will serve this agency very well in this new role. Please join me in congratulating Rochelle on her appointment to Chief of Staff for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. White. And again, as with others, we have watched your contributions to TDCJ over time. We, like Mr. Collier, we are very glad on the board that you've made the very wise decision to come back to our family. And, and, and we very much look forward to your great contributions leading into the future. So would you care to share a few words with us?
Thank you. Chairman, members, Mr. Collier, it is an honor to serve as the Chief of Staff. I look forward to continuing to support and advance our mission, working with our staff and your leadership. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I will next call upon Mr. Chris Carter, the TDCJ Chaplaincy and Volunteer Services Division Director, to join us at the, at the podium. And I understand, Mr. Carter, that you will be recognizing today Ms. Ruby Davis. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chairman Nichols, Vice Chair Johnson, Mr. Collier, Pastor Sprinkle, board members. It's my honor today to present Ms. Ruby Davis. She joined our agency over thirty-eight years ago. She has several, she has much experience in the criminal justice field. She worked at the WJ Estelle Unit as a correctional officer. She's, she's held various capacities such as Probation Officer, Substance Use Counselor, and MTC Director. In November of twenty-one, Ruby joined the Rehabilitation Programs Division, where she held positions such as Manager One in Substance Use Treatment. She is a Licensed Chemical Dependency Officer. She also held Manager Four position in Programs Coordination. Ruby has a Bachelor's Degree from Sam Houston State University, a Master's Degree in Juvenile Justice, and a Master's of Art Degree in Counseling, both from Prairie View A&amp;M. Ruby's vast experience, education, and passion for helping others will serve her greatly as she assumes her new role in the Chaplaincy and Volunteer Services Division as the Deputy Director.
Ms. Davis, if you will join us, congratulations on your promotion. And I know I speak on behalf of the board, and you know my personal views on this, that the, the mission of the Chaplaincy and Volunteer Services Division is, is undeniably mission critical to what we do as a board, as, to what TDCJ does as an agency. So So, for you to step forward and assume this leadership role, and to assist Mr. Carter and others in achieving this mission, there's not a day that doesn't go by that we're not thinking about the importance of the work that's done. So, thank you very much for doing what you do, and would you care to share a few words with us?
Thank you, Chairman Nichols. Good morning, Mr. Collier, board members. I am very excited and honored to be selected for this position. I'm looking forward to serving the staff, the inmates, and the volunteers of Texas Department of Criminal Justice. And again, thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. For our final recognition for today, today, we have the distinct honor of recognizing an individual who has served the state of Texas with unwavering dedication and distinction, our own Inspector General, Mr. Chris Love. Mr. Love, if you would do us the honor of joining us at the podium. Inspector General Love's career in law enforcement spans 45 years, 45 years, 45 years, did I say that enough, of public service. Mr. Love, we know your law enforcement career began in 1979 as a trooper with the Texas Department of Public Safety. We know that you then served the public as a game warden with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. In 1987, you returned to DPS, the Texas Department of Public Safety, where you conducted criminal investigations, first in the Narcotics Section, and later with the Texas Ranger Division. Your investigative skills and integrity led you to a pivotal role, investigating allegations of misconduct at the agency formerly known as the Texas Youth Commission, where you were ultimately recruited to join that agency's Office of Inspector General. Rising through the ranks, you promoted to the Inspector General role for TYC in 2009. In 2012, you transitioned to the Office of the Inspector General for the operations of TDCJ, where you first served as a commander of the Criminal Investigations Division. Just one year later, in 2013, you promoted to Deputy Director. In April of 2018, your exemplary leadership and service were recognized when our predecessors on this Board, the Texas Board of Criminal Justice, appointed you as Inspector General. We fully appreciate you and your decision, after this long and decorated career, to take a well-deserved step, although I know it's not happening yet, but you're taking a well-deserved step towards what my wife likes to call the encore years following her retirement, but we're not there yet, are we, Inspector?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Love, we recognize you today for your professionalism, integrity, and commitment to justice. On behalf of the entire Board, I extend our heartfelt gratitude for your decades of service and the impact you have made across the state. Congratulations on an extraordinary career, and we wish you the very best in your continued career, following your retirement from your position as Inspector General. Would you care to share a few words with us, sir?
What an absolute, absolute honor it has been to serve with the Texas Department of Criminal Justice Office of Inspector General, and now referred to the Texas Board of Criminal Justice, and, but to work with the men and women of TDCJ, and of course, with OIG, has been such an honor, such a privilege, and I'm grateful. I am truly, truly blessed beyond measure, and again, it's, yes, it's not over yet, you know, but I'm thankful. Thank you, sir.
Well, let's give Mr. Love a well-deserved standing ovation. And, Mr. Love, don't leave yet, because we have a couple of very special things to provide to you today. The first is a resolution of commendation, and I am going to take the time that you deserve to read this, so that everyone knows what's here. Whereas the Texas Board of Criminal Justice, the Executive Administration and employees of the Texas Department of Criminal Justice, and the Executive Administration and employees of the Wyndham School District, wish to honor Chris W. Love, Sr., for his outstanding contributions and service to the state, including his leadership during his career with the Office of the Inspector General, and whereas Mr. Love has advanced the mission of the OIG to investigate allegations of criminal activity and misconduct that impact TDCJ programs, personnel, and resources, including fraud, waste, and abuse, and its mission of working effectively with law enforcement partners such as the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the United States Drug Enforcement Administration, and the United States Marshal Service. Whereas the efforts of OIG under Mr. Love's leadership have helped to protect the public at large, TDCJ, and Wyndham employees, and persons incarcerated in TDCJ facilities, and OIG's partnerships with other law enforcement partners, find a commitment to protect public safety by sharing information and reinforcing a law enforcement allegiance when dealing with escapees, fugitives, parolees, and organized prison gangs. Whereas Mr. Love's career-long and dedicated contributions to the state of Texas include not only his work in OIG, but also his service as a state trooper for the Department of Public Safety, as a game warden with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, a criminal investigator with the DPS Narcotics Section, and as a Texas Ranger. Whereas Mr. Love was recruited to the Texas Youth Commission Office of Inspector General following his instrumental assistance investigating alleged misconduct in the TYC while part of a Ranger Task Force, and was promoted to TYC Inspector General in 2009. Whereas Mr. Love transferred to OIG as a commander in the Criminal Investigations Division in 2012, and rose to the position of Deputy Division Director in 2013, and was appointed by TBCJ as the Inspector General in April of 2018. Whereas Mr. Love holds an Associate's Degree in Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice from Western Texas College in Snyder, and holds a Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Master Peace Officer Certification and Peace Officer Instructor Certification. Whereas, under Mr. Love's leadership, the OIG attained recognition as an accredited law enforcement agency from the Texas Police Chiefs Association, the 206th Agency in Texas to be so accredited. Whereas, among other operational accomplishments, Mr. Love as Inspector General has overseen the development and implementation of a strike force team that works with OIG investigators assigned to the units and TDCJ staff to combat the introduction of illegal contraband into the prison system. Therefore, be it hereby resolved, that we, the Board, publicly commend and express, on behalf, and on behalf of the men and women of TDCJ and Wyndham, sincere appreciation for the dedicated public service of Chris W. Love, Sr., throughout his career, including the professionalism and dedication he has demonstrated and leadership he has provided while serving as Inspector General. Resolve this 13th day of December 2024 by the Texas Board of Criminal Justice. Here you go, sir. All right, Mr. Love, it's not all. So, we also have today a proclamation that has been signed by our Governor, Greg Abbott, and I'm going to read this as well. "The State of Texas Governor, to all whom these presents shall come, greetings. Know ye that this official recognition is presented upon his retirement to Chris W. Love, Sr., Texas Department of Criminal Justice. At the heart of the Texas spirit lies a desire to serve our fellow man, and you have exemplified this ethos personally and professionally. After more than 40 years of arduous service to the people of Texas, your career draws to a close, although we know it's not over yet, and there can be no doubt that this state is better off for your efforts. Though the sheer scope of your work is vast, it pales in comparison to the impacts you made on individual lives and the example you set for your loved ones, and therein lies your true legacy. A towering figure within your profession, you advanced the interests of justice considerably as a trooper in the Department of Public Safety, a game warden in the Parks and Wildlife Department, and as a Texas Ranger. This invaluable experience prepared you for the important work you did as Inspector General of the Texas Youth Commission, and later, the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. In every role and with every agency, you proved yourself a leader of the highest caliber, and you have indeed shaped a story as big as Texas. Ultimately, public service is a noble calling and a profound honor, profound honor, for it is rooted in public trust. Having proven yourself worthy of the trust that Texans placed in you, you have built a legacy of servant leadership that will echo throughout the ages long. First Lady Cecilia Abbott joins me in extending warmest wishes for a fulfilling retirement in testimony whereof. I have hereunder signed my name and caused the seal of the state of Texas to be affixed at the City of Austin on this, the 9th day of December 2024." So, here is the proclamation that you justly deserve, sir. All right, once again, thank you very much, Mr. Love. Our next agenda topic covers consent items. Are there any amendments, objections, or abstentions to the proposed consent items? If not, the consent items posted for this meeting's agenda will stand approved. The next item on the agenda was originally scheduled to be a report from the Judicial Advisory Council. Due to unforeseen circumstances, our designee, giving that presentation, was unable to attend this meeting, therefore, the presentation will be carried over to a future meeting. The next item on our agenda is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 151.1, entitled Substance Abuse Felony Punishment Facilities Eligibility Criteria. TDCJ's General Counsel, Ms. Stephanie Greger, will be presenting and is at the podium. If you're ready, Ms. Greger, please proceed.
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Mr. Collier. This is a proposed amendment to Section 159.1 of the Texas Administrative Code, titled Substance Abuse Felony Punishment Facilities Eligibility Criteria. The amendments revise the title of Substance Abuse Treatment Operations Manual to Substance Use Treatment Operations Manual. This change is made to reflect current terminology, and the reference to the CJAD Safe P Procedure Manual is also removed. In Section B, language is removed to align with current verbiage. Section D is revised to clarify eligibility, and finally, grammatical and formatting updates are made. These will be posted in the Texas Register and available for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Greger. Are there any questions from any members of the Board on this proposal? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the publication in the Texas Register the proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 163.21, entitled Administration, to receive public comment as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Burrow. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Burrow. I have a second from Judge Francis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 163.21, entitled Administration. Please proceed, Ms. Greger.
Thank you. This is a proposed amendment to Section 163.21 concerning administration. The amendment revises the term continuum of sanctions to progressive sanctions throughout. Section B of the rule sets forth policies and procedures that are required to be included in administrative manuals maintained by CSCD directors. The amendments remove the human resources category, as well as certain topics in the standards category, including training and staff development, job descriptions, qualifications, and responsibilities, insurance and honesty bonds, and case management. The Texas Risk Assessment System, or TRAS, is added, and case management audit procedures is revised to case file audit procedures. Additionally, language is revised referencing an application process to specify a proposal. Language is added to state that documentation of training hours shall be maintained at the CSCD and available upon request, and grammatical and formatting updates are made. These will be posted to the Texas Register and available for public comment.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Greger. Are there any questions on this proposal from the Board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the publication in the Texas Register the proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 163.21, entitled Administration, to receive public comment as presented.
I have a motion from Judge Francis. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Judge Francis. I have a second from Secretary Dr. Burrow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 163.33, entitled Community Supervision Staff. Ms. Greger, please proceed.
This is a proposed amendment to Section 163.33 concerning community supervision staff. The word "rule" is revised to "section" throughout. The definition of direct supervision is removed from Section B4 and replaced with language referencing the next rule we will talk about, which is 163.35, and grammatical and formatting updates are made. These will be posted to the Texas Register and available for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Greger. Are there any questions on this proposal from the Board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the publication in the Texas Register the proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 163.21, Administration, to receive public comment as presented.
I have a motion from Judge Francis. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Judge Francis. I have a second from Secretary Dr. Burrow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 163.33, entitled Community Supervision Staff. Ms. Greger, please proceed.
This is a proposed amendment to Section 163.33 concerning community supervision staff. The word "rule" is revised to "section" throughout. The definition of direct supervision is removed from Section B4 and replaced with language referencing the next rule we will talk about, which is 163.35, and grammatical and formatting updates are made. These will be posted to the Texas Register and available for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Greger. Are there any questions on the Board on this proposal? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have a motion. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve for publication in the Texas Register the proposed amendments- the proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administration Code Section 163.33, Community Supervision Staff, to receive public comment as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Ambassador Siv. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ambassador Siv. I think that was... Okay, so we have a motion from Ambassador Siv. We have a second from Vice Chair Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 163.35, entitled Supervision. Ms. Gregor, you kind of forecast this one, but please proceed.
This is a proposed amendment to Rule 163.35 concerning supervision. The amendments again revise Rule 2 section. They also revise and reorganize the definitions of direct supervision and indirect supervision, which are now in a standalone subsection of the rule. The new definition of direct supervision is updated to clarify the acceptable use of technology for state funding purposes. Grammatical and formatting updates are also made. These changes will be posted to the Texas Register and available for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Are there any questions from the board on this proposal? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve for publication in the Texas Register the proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administration Code Section 163.35, quote, "supervision," end quote, to receive public comment as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from General Welch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from General Welch. I have a second from Pastor Sprinkle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 163.41, entitled Medical and Psychological Information. Ms. Gregor, please continue.
This is a proposed amendment to Section 163.41 concerning medical and psychological information. The amendment updates the reference to model policy guidelines with the corresponding Texas Health and Safety Code, Section 85.141, and removes the website address for model policy guidelines from being mentioned in the rule. These will be posted to the Texas Register and available for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Are there any questions from the board on this particular proposal? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve for publication in the Texas Register the proposed amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 163.41, Medical and Psychological Information, to receive public comments as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Ms. Zeiger. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Zeiger. I have a second from Secretary Dr. Burrow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed adoption of amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 152.1, entitled Correctional Institutional Divisions. Ms. Gregor, you're on a roll. Please proceed.
I've got a few today. This item is the adoption of proposed amendments to Section 152.1 concerning the correctional institutional division. These amendments were presented at the August Board Meeting and have been posted to the Texas Register. The changes include revising the word offender to inmate throughout and removing a reference to transfer facilities, which is no longer referenced in statute. No public comments were received.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Are there any questions from the board on this proposal? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice adopt amendment to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 152.1, Correctional Institutions Division, as published in the Texas Register, and that the Chairman sign the order to this effect.
I have a motion from Pastor Sprinkle. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Pastor Sprinkle. I have a second from General Welch. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed adoption of amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Sections 152.21 through 152.27, entitled Correctional Capacity. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
This item is the adoption of proposed amendments to a series of sections 152.21 through 152.27 related to correctional capacity. These amendments were presented at the August Board Meeting and have been posted to the Texas Register. The primary change to this series is the increase of capacity by 2,084 beds. This increase is necessary to keep up with the projected growth models for the agency. The Texas Government Code provides a detailed process to increase capacity, which has now been met. To date, divisions within the agency have presented findings to Mr. Collier that an increase is necessary and achievable while upholding our standards. The notice has been posted at the affected units, and no inmate comments were received. Both the Governor and the Attorney General have reviewed the recommendation and have approved the capacity increase. The proposed amendments were posted in the Texas Register, and one comment has been received.
Okay, and do we need to discuss that comment?
Yes, sir. That comment was made by a civilian who had concerns, in particular, about the Stiles Unit. There, the commenter was kind of under the assumption that everyone at the Stiles Unit would now be housed with someone else rather than having an individual cell, which is not the case. There were also some concerns mentioned in the comment that individuals with mental health or behavioral health concerns may not be suitable for having a bunkmate, and I've been assured in my discussions with the agency that regular protocols will be followed, and if an inmate has some sort of mental health or behavioral concern that would warrant them having a single cell, then they will still continue to get that.
So, bottom line, the increase in capacity that's being proposed is not going to result in operational changes at that particular unit?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice adopt amendment to the Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 152.21 to 27, Correctional Capacity, as published in the Texas Register, and that the Chairman sign this order to effect.
I have a motion from Mr. Fordyce. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Fordyce. I have a second from Vice Chair Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed adoption of amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 163.31, entitled Sanctions, Programs, and Services. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
This item is the adoption of proposed amendments to Section 163.31 concerning sanctions, programs, and services. These amendments were presented at the August Board Meeting and have been posted in the Texas Register. The adopted amendments revise pre-sentence and post-sentence investigations to mirror statutory language. They revise the continuum of sanctions to progressive sanctions throughout, and they update references to the Texas Government Code along with grammatical and formatting updates. No comments were received in the posting process.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Are there any questions on this proposal from any member of the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice adopt amendment to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code, Section 163.31, Sanctions, Programs, and Services, as published in the Texas Register, and that the Chairman sign the order to this effect.
Thank you. I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. I had a tie on the second, so I'm going to give the tiebreaker to Judge Francis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed adoption of amendments to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administrative Code Section 163.37, entitled Reports and Records. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
This item is the adoption of proposed amendments to Section 163.37 concerning records and reports. The amendments were presented at the August Board Meeting and posted to the Texas Register. The adopted amendments revise the term "pre-sentence report" and "post-sentence report" to mirror statutory language. No comments were received.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. Any questions from the board on this proposal? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice adopt amendment to Board Rule Title 37, Texas Administration Code, Section 163.37, Reports and Records, as published in the Texas Register, and that the Chairman sign the order to this effect.
Thank you. I have a motion from Board Secretary Dr. Burrow. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Burrow. I have a second from Pastor Sprinkle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed revisions to Board Policy 01.09, entitled Internal Audit Policy Statement. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
This is a proposed revision of Board Policy 1.09, the Internal Audit Policy Statement. The directive is renumbered from Board Policy 14.02 to align with other policy statements of offices reporting directly to the Board. The directive is revised to remove the word "division" from the title. All references are revised of the Internal Audit Division to the Office of the Independent Auditor throughout. This reflects the name change approved by the Board at the October meeting. Additionally, the policy is revised to incorporate the new global internal auditing standards throughout the directive detailing the responsibilities of the Board as they relate to the internal audit function. These new standards add a requirement for the internal audit resource plan and require specific details on the internal auditing function, which requires extensive additional language throughout. Much of this language relates to communication and reporting between the Internal Audit Division, the Board, and the Department. The policy statement is revised for clarification. The Sunset Advisory Commission is removed from the list of recipients who will receive a final report. The signature authority is updated, and formatting and grammar edits are made as well.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. And obviously, just to confirm, did you coordinate with the Office of the Independent Auditor with respect to these changes?
Yes, sir.
And do these changes reflect the actions that the Board has taken to reinforce, because names are important, the independence of the Office of the Independent Auditor, not as a division of TDCJ, but instead, a independent auditor organization that reports directly to this Board?
Yes, sir, they do.
Any other questions from any members of the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the proposed revisions, the Board Policy 01.09, Internal Audit Policy Statement, as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Judge Francis. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Judge Francis. I have a second from Ms. Zeiger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed revisions to Personnel Directive PD-21, entitled Diversity and Antidiscrimination in the Workplace. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
This is a proposed revision of Personnel Directive 21. These revisions were presented to all of you yesterday by Ms. McCafferty at the Human Resources Committee. I will briefly go over a summary of the revisions with you. The revisions replace the term offender with inmate. All forms and attachments are revised and incorporated into a new format. The revisions allow more processes to be conducted via email or virtual application to reduce paper. A code of conduct and performance standards is added based on the TDCJ's ethical code. Supervisors are allowed to coordinate with warden and department heads to implement interim remedial action when needed. A 90-day investigation timeline is outlined with a possible 30-day extension. Verbiage is added to define protected classes, protected activities, and forms of discrimination. And most importantly, PD-21 is created sort of separately to address equal employment opportunities and antidiscrimination, whereas it used to be, as Ms. McCafferty mentioned yesterday, it kind of used to be lumped under the Human Resources Policy PD-22. Now it will be a standalone policy.
And as you indicated, Ms. Gregor, we had, the board had an extensive presentation on these changes and others from Ms. McCafferty yesterday as part of the Human Resources Committee meeting, and that content of that presentation, as well as questions and answers, will obviously be incorporated into the board's consideration of the changes that you're presenting. Are there any other questions from Ms. Gregor on these, on this proposal? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We do have a motion. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the revisions to Personnel Directive PD-21, Diversity and Antidiscrimination in the Workplace, as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Ambassador Siv. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ambassador Siv. I have a second from Vice Chair Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed revisions to Personnel Directive, this time PD-22, entitled General Rules of Conduct and Disciplinary Actions Guidelines for Employees. Ms. Gregor, please proceed.
These are proposed revisions, as you mentioned, to Personnel Directive 22, General Rules of Conduct and Disciplinary Action Guidelines for Employees. These revisions were also presented yesterday by Ms. McCafferty during the Human Resources Committee. I will again give a high-level overview of the summary of revisions. The changes revise the definitions for inmate and workday. All forms and attachments are revised and incorporated into a new format. Certain terms are replaced. We added and outlined progressive corrective actions to be implemented before resorting to disciplinary actions. This is designed to foster behavioral change, positive performance, and conduct among employees. These new progressive corrective actions include verbal guidance, temporary suspension of telework, counseling, and an employee development plan. The changes change the use of force violations to mirror the Behavioral Intervention Plan terminology. They add a code of conduct, add new terms for active periods, renumber in-group violations. The amendments merged tardiness and unexcused absenteeism into one violation named attendance. They add a new violation to unsustainable performance, define considerations a conduct official may use when making their determinations. They replace the terms guilty and not guilty to be substantiated and unsubstantiated. The changes make probation a standalone action with new conditions, or it may be used in conjunction with other disciplinary actions. Demotions are no longer temporary. A separated employee while on probation now requires a rehire review. And the EEO disciplinary processes are removed to PD-21, as mentioned previously. Ultimately, these changes seek to move the agency forward in their mission to improve employee morale and retention.
Thank you, Ms. Gregor. And as with the prior item, we had an extensive presentation on these changes from Ms. McCafferty as part of the Human Resources Committee of the Board. Board yesterday. And that discussion, as well as the questions and answers, will be incorporated into the Board's consideration of this particular item. With that, are there any other questions from any member of the Board of Ms. Gregor with respect to this proposal? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the revisions to Personnel Directive PD-22, General Rules of Conduct and Disciplinary Action Guidelines for Employees, as presented.
I have a motion from Ms. Zeicher. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Zeicher. I have a second from Secretary Dr. Burrow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Ms. Gregor, let me just say that, I mean, there was a lot there. We had a lot to do, but I think that reflects the hard work of you and the folks who work with you in General Counsel Division to make sure that our Board rules and our administrative regulations that affect our operations in the state of Texas are consistent with statutes, changes that the Board has adopted over time. So we appreciate the hard work of your General Counsel Division in getting that done.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for acknowledging the team, as they certainly do the heavy lifting. I have the privilege of really just coming in at the end and looking over things, and most of the time, they are spot on. So, thank you.
It is now time for the Chairman's Report. And as many of you know, I enjoy using my time at these meetings to highlight programs within TDCJ that are operating in a unit in the area of the state in which we hold our board meetings. Obviously, we're here today at the Texas Prison Museum in Huntsville. So today, I would like to take the opportunity to highlight the License Plate Factory located at the John M. Wynn Unit here in Huntsville. I have had the opportunity to walk this facility, including most recently in June of this year, and it is always rewarding to me, as I know I speak for my fellow board members on this, it's always rewarding, first and foremost, to see members of our population actively engaged in productive activity, and in this case, under the leadership of the tremendous staff at the License Plate Facility. The License Plate Facility, the License Plate Factory, is responsible for producing all vehicle license plates for the state of Texas. On average, and I'll be corrected by the experts that we're going to hear from today, the facility, as I understand it, produces 80,000 general and 2,500 personalized license plates every day, which is more than any other such facility in the world. Originally established in 1935 at the Huntsville Unit, the License Plate Factory was moved to the Wynn Unit in 1975. In addition to providing this vital service to the state and its citizens, the License Plate Factory equips members of the TDCJ population who step forward to take advantage of the opportunity with marketable job skills such as graphic design, forklift operation, quality assurance, machine operation, and warehouse management, in addition to the soft skills needed to be an effective and productive member of a production team. TDCJ's Manufacturing, Agribusiness, and Logistics Division, which oversees the operation of the License Plate Factory, among other factories within the TDCJ system, reports through its Work Against Recidivism Program that members of the population who step forward to work these TDCJ factory jobs prior to release have a recidivism rate of approximately 9.6%, a rate that is significantly, significantly below the rate applicable to the entire TDCJ population. We all know that work, activity, and engagement matter. Now, essential to the success of the License Plate Factory are two devoted TDCJ employees who are with us today, and we know that you're just members of a great team at that factory, but we're going to hear from you today. So today, we've got with us Factory Manager Michael Thomas has commend, the individuals we're going to hear from today have been commended by Factory Manager Michael Thomas for their dedication in saying that they are generally both the first to come to the factory and the last to leave at the end of the, end of the workday. So I would like to invite our two guests today, Mr. James Stewart and Mr. Isaac Cohen, who are here with us at the podium. So I'm going to introduce the two of you if I can. So first, Mr. Stewart. We know you as the Assistant Manager of the License Plate Factory. And I didn't, I didn't recognize you today because you're wearing a suit and tie, so that was good. But I appreciate you doing that for us. Now, Mr. Stewart, you followed in the footsteps of your parents when you began your career with the Texas Department of Criminal Justice 11 years ago. You started in the mailroom and then worked in the Estelle textile mill, the Information Technology Division radio shop, and the sign shop prior to transitioning to the License Plate Factory where you have worked the last nine years. As the Assistant Manager, you oversee all production at the factory, ensuring the factory stays on track to fulfill its contract of, I still can't comprehend this number, 10 million plates a year. Now, prior to joining TDCJ, Mr. Stewart, we understand that you served 10 years in the United States Army, and this Board also thanks you for that service to our country. You graduated from the University of Maryland with a bachelor's degree in history, and I understand you were working on your master's degree in business administration from Sam Houston State University. We understand you will be graduating in August, and just in advance, we're going to congratulate you on that accomplishment as well. And next, we have with us Mr. Isaac Cohen, Industrial Specialist Four at the factory. Mr. Cohen, we understand that you began your career with the Texas Department of Criminal Justice as a correctional officer over 14 years ago. And after serving in Gray for five years, you transitioned to textile and then the License Plate Factory. In your current role, you oversee the cutting and quality control of the license plates. And I remember watching that operation. That's, that's an amazing operation. We understand from the factory team that you were instrumental in assessing production needs and creating production plans. We understand that you were born and raised in Portland, Maine, and that you moved to Texas at the end of your high school. You earned an Associate's Degree in Human Services from Lone Star College and were previously a special education teacher prior to joining TDCJ. With that introduction of the two of you, I will turn the program over to the two of you, starting with Mr. Stewart, to tell us more about the factory operations.
Good morning, Mr., good morning Chairman Nichols, Mr. Collier, members of the Board. Originally, license plates were made using the traditional embossing process. However, in 2009, the factory converted to an all-digital manufacturing process. The process begins when the factory receives a list of sequences which are a set of letters and numbers for each plate from the Department of Motor Vehicles. The sequence, these sequences are inserted into the design of the plate and sent to print. After printing, the license plates go through a cutting process. Plates are inspected for quality assurance purposes and packaged using boxes created at the Plonsky Unit Box Factory. Pallets with boxes of plates are moved to the warehouse for storing until DMV schedules them for, to ship to the counties. In addition to general license plates, the agency also produces personalized license plates. Individuals purchasing these license plates can select from 850 different designs. Each morning, the DMV provides a copy of the, of the orders placed, so we can fill them in a timely manner. Personalized plates are picked up three times a week.
As the only license plate factory in the state of Texas, it provides a unique experience for incarcerated workers to gain job skills. All inmate workers at the factory receive training for their individual duties. Additionally, there are 17 on-the-job training programs for individuals to complete while working in the factory. These range from accounting clerk and graphic designer to machine operator and production coordinator. In line with business standards, performance evaluations are completed on all inmates once a quarter. This provides an opportunity for them to not only improve in their job duties, but enhance their soft skills. Working in the license plate factory is a great opportunity that prepares inmates for employment and success upon release to their communities. Now we have a video from one of our inmate workers about his experience working in the license plate factory.
When I started doing this, I came in here with the attitude like a lot of other guys had. You know, I don't, I'm not going to work. I'm just going to do my, my, my sentence, my time, and just get over with. But luckily, like I said, I worked with some really strong plant managers, some really strong supervisors that encouraged me. And I remember, we had a plant manager, and she once told me, she said, "Can you do this?" And I told her, "I think I can." She said, "No, I don't need to know if you think you can. I need to know, can you do it?" I told her, "I can try." She said, "I don't know what you, I don't want to know if you can try. I want to know, can you do it?" I told her, "Yes, ma'am, I can do it." And ever since then, working here, you know, it's really, it's really good for me, man. It makes me still feel like I'm productive, it makes me feel like I'm doing something that's beneficial, not only just to me, but like people in general, because I've learned things that I never would imagine learning. You know, I've learned like a whole bunch of communication skills, soft skills, and hard skills. So tool-wise, like I know all the tools here. I'm one of the main guys that does all the maintenance work on all the printers. So I've learned quite a bit. I get up in the mornings and I look forward to coming here, because not only that, I want to see myself being able to help somebody, especially the young guys, whether it's in here, whether on the other side of the fence, and just showing people that there's more to it than just what we're already used to. You know, I want to just try to contribute to make everything go back up. Everybody's goal here is to get out. Everybody goes to get out, and that's the easy part, getting out. It's the staying out that's the hard part. And if you don't start developing the skill right now, I don't care what anybody says, you cannot walk out that gate and hit a switch and everything's going to be okay. You have to start developing your skills right now. You have to start creating a resume. You have to start creating yourself an action plan. You have to start doing everything you need to do right now at this time to prepare yourself.
The License Plate Factory provides an important product for the state of Texas. Every time you walk outside, you'll see a license plate produced by the hard-working staff and inmates in this factory. Thank you.
Well, thank you too for what you do. And specifically, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Cohen, appreciate your educating us on the process and for all of your hard work. So I've got a few questions. I guess I'm going to start with Mr. Collier, though. Mr. Collier, we have excellent presentations like this. What do we do to make sure that the public, I mean, we can show these at our board meetings, but what do we do to make sure the public has access to seeing this type of content to see what's going on within our system?
I think a couple of ways. Amanda and her team through our communications, through the work not only on social media, but as they highlight different areas of the agency in our internal magazine, but external information as well, providing updates on that for the, what the factories are actually doing. But in addition to that, we also have the work fairs where we bring employers in to see what skills these inmates are learning in those factories and trying to help connect them with employers as they get out. So certainly something we can probably improve on, but we do a significant amount of that now and try to continue to make sure folks see what good work is going on behind those factories.
Yeah, well, there's nothing, from my perspective, like a short presentation like this to really illustrate the impact that this type of program has, not only on the state of Texas at large, but also on members of our, our population. And then, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Cohen, so just to be clear, are we using kind of state-of-the-art technology in this license plate factory as opposed to the old days of taking a piece of metal and stamping it with, with, with letters and numbers?
Yes, sir. We're, we're currently using the most up-to-date equipment from 3M that they provide with us through our contract with them.
Excellent. And is, and y'all produce so many plates. So from your perspective, is the factory able to produce plates at a rate that would allow dealerships maybe one day to replace the paper tags with real plates when a customer purchases a vehicle?
Yes, sir. With House Bill 718, all paper tags and permits will be eliminated, and the factory will start producing four different metal plates that will replace those. Right now, we run one eight-hour shift that's from 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. With that, we can do 1.2 million plates a month. And once, once the DMV gives us how many plates additional that they're going to need, TCI will look at our production rate and add additional shifts if needed.
Well, that's going to be a tremendous effort in terms of protecting public safety, because I can tell you, I hear from law enforcement folks all the time that they're concerned about the abuse of those paper tags. And so if we can get those, the real tags out on vehicles and eliminate as much, as best we can, the use of paper tags, that y'all are really doing a tremendous public service. Any other questions for our guests today? Yes, sir?
The number that we hear, hear is quite staggering, especially the fact that it's the largest producing facility in the world. Didn't we make the Tennessee plates also at one point?
Yes, sir, we didn't. 2020, when they had the tornado go through and pretty much wiped out their facility, they called and we jumped in and we made those plates for them. Yes, sir.
Well, I don't even remember when I visited, was it after COVID or before COVID?
It was actually in the middle of COVID.
In the middle of COVID?
Yes, sir.
Well, I thank you for training me how to make some license plate, and I still have some that you teach, taught me how to make. Thank you very much.
And that was my question, too. I know we had had a request from Tennessee, but have we had requests from any other states in terms of making plates, or is, pretty much, we're, we're pretty busy with just making plates for Texas?
We have in the past. I wasn't there whenever we did, but not since then have we had one that we've had to do, no more.
Justice Johnson, we're working a special order right now that is for a special event that happens in January in Washington, DC. We're making the plates for that as well.
Awesome. Awesome.
Any other questions?
I'm curious, my visit there, as I recall, there were two of the 3M machines, is that right, that do the primary printing?
We actually have five thermal printers and one inkjet printer right now.
Oh, so there's five thermal printers?
Five thermal printers.
Right. And so my concern was this, is that, is there sufficient equipment? If you have a piece of equipment going down, are you going to be able to maintain the, the level of production?
Yes, sir. We, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And that's the question. Do you have sufficient equipment, or is there an expectation that somewhere in the future, we'll need to get even additional equipment to keep up with the demand?
Right now, we have the sufficient equipment to do that. Once something goes down, we, we're able to call 3M. Either they help us right then, or they get a technician out immediately to come look at it, fix it, do what we got to do to get it back up and running. Very little downtime for it. Thank you.
So for the last portion of the Chairman's message for 2024, I thought it would be appropriate just to take a minute and deliver a holiday message. So we have all survived being stuffed for Thanksgiving, and we are rolling into our next holidays, as we know, including Christmas and Hanukkah. During this holiday season, we have many reasons to give thanks. On behalf of all the members of our Board, I would like to say how thankful we are for the men and women who serve the state as employees of the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. For those staff in attendance today and to the thousands working right now, as we reach the end of 2024, we encourage you to take pride in your accomplishments over this past year. And we encourage you to enjoy the holidays with your friends and your families as you prepare to continue to make the valued efforts that our state needs from you in 2025 and beyond. Whatever your specific job assignment is, understand that you are a part of and a contributor to a team that carries out the missions of the agency to provide public safety, promote positive change in offender behavior, reintegrate offenders into society, and assist victims of crime. Your individual contributions to those missions are much appreciated throughout this agency and throughout this state. Your work ultimately helps make Texas a safer and better place to live. On behalf of our Governor, our Board, and the citizens of our great state, we thank you for your dedication and performance. Our Board wishes all TDCJ employees and their families happy and restful holidays, a very Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. The next item on our agenda will be a report from TDCJ Executive Director, Mr. Brian Collier. Mr. Collier, I understand you have two topics to present to us today. If you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you Chairman Nichols. We've had a very busy fall, but I'm very proud of the things that we've accomplished in a short period of time in the agency. The new organizational structure you approved in October is in place, and we'll fill the remaining chairs by the end of this month. Our sunset commission hearing in November, and I greatly appreciate those of you that attended, went very well, and was followed by our second hearing this, earlier this week, that went very well as, also, and thank you for attending that as well, Chairman. We will continue to work closely with the sunset commission members and staff as we begin the legislative session, and I will keep you updated on the progress we make. We've been preparing for the 89th legislative session. We've had several meetings with committees and leadership offices to provide detail on our overall legislative appropriation request. The session will begin on Tuesday, January 14th, 2025, and we stand ready to work closely with members and committees on issues that impact this agency. I will keep you updated on our activities as we move through this session. Also Chairman, in looking at 2024, we have many challenges, yet our staff have worked hard to make sure that we were successful. A few notable accomplishments for this past year include the historic rollout of body cameras in our maximum security units, the implementation of a significantly improved behavioral intervention policy, and the related training. We transitioned our data systems from servers to the, to the cloud. We added air conditioning to more than 2,700 beds, bringing our overall total in the agency to a little over 62,000 air-conditioned beds in the system right now. We opened our very first innovation unit. We received our new mobile command center, and it is ready for deployment. Our staff retention rates have continued to improve throughout the year, and our overall staffing in the agency. If you may remember, a year ago, I was talking to you about staffing in all of our divisions, as well as our correctional officer staffing, and the struggles we were having there. We've gained over 1,200 employees over this past year, to a fill rate in the agency of about 80%. So we've made significant improvements across the board as it relates to staffing. Overall, 2024 has been a very good year. As we approach the Christmas season, I'd like to wish each and every one of you a happy and Merry Christmas, and especially these employees of the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Christmas brings us hope and an opportunity to focus on the things that truly matter. Please keep our staff and their families in your thoughts and prayers this holiday season, and remember that as many of us may enjoy time with family and friends this holiday season, there are thousands of women and men at TDCJ who are hard at work during those times. Thank you to each of you, as our board, for your support and your assistance to the agency over the past year. I pray God's blessings for each of you, and wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Any questions from the members of the board for Mr. Collier on his report? Thank you then, Mr. Collier, and, and we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is a report from the Agricultural Advisory Committee. And, Mr. Bill Lewis, the Director of Manufacturing, Agribusiness and Logistics Division, will be presenting on that today. Mr. Lewis, you've joined us at the podium, and if you're ready, please proceed.
Yes, sir. Thank you Chairman, Mr. Collier, board members.
I'd like to update you, for the last quarter, we had two meetings with the Ag Advisory Committee. As most of you know, Chairman Tom Fordice is the Chairman of that committee, Texas Department of Agriculture also has a representative, Walt Roberts. Texas A&amp;M also has a veterinarian, Dr. Cliff Lamb, who's on the Ag Advisory Committee. And then the ex-Board of Criminal Justice Pastor Miles is on the Agricultural Committee. In July of '24, we met at Buffalo Ranch, looked at our agricultural operations over there. Been challenged by Mr. Fordice to look at our cowcalf operation and increase our current cowcalf operation numbers. Right now, we operate right at 8,000 head of cattle. We wanna work towards getting that up to where we're at 12, 13,000 head of cattle. I'll say this, when Mr. Fordice was the Ag Director, prior to me, he did tell me that they had 15,000 head of cattle, and he was smiling when he told me that. So I, I, I got it. So, we're, we're working to do that within this last year. We've held back 500 head of females, of females that we're leaving back into the herd, in order to build our, our herd back up. One of the things we also looked at was artificial insemination practices for use in, in our cowcalf operation. We use natural cover for most of our cattle, or bulls. And we coordinate the synchronization technology at the Heifer Development Center, working with Texas A&amp;M. Ron Gibbons, who's our Deputy Division Director over there, is working with Texas A&amp;M on our synchronization patterns, to get our cattle around the same time, so we can get them bred around the same time, so they'll be around the same poundage, and we're working through that. We've also talked about farming and grazing, contract operations, implemented consistent contract operational practices, researched our agricultural industry standards for grazing and farming. We do a lot of that in TDCJ, and to update the contract language to reflect those standards. And a portion of that is looking at our contracts. One of the visions of Mr. Collier is to make sure that we're looking at reentry for our offenders, and we've had some language in some of our contracts that's indicated that if you had previously been incarcerated, if you contracted with us in the agricultural program, you weren't allowed to hire anybody that, that was previously incarcerated with us. We've taken that language out, we're going through all of our contracts and looking at that to make sure that we can provide a different environment. Hurricane Burl, the preliminary damages, we did some walkthroughs. Collapse of two poultry cage systems down at the Memorial Unit, about 48,000 laying hens that affected, both houses were repaired, updated to return to internal structures to the original state. Swine operations down south, when Burl came through at Clemmons-Ramsey, Clemmons Trustee Camp were impacted greatly. We moved approximately 200,000 head of swine back up here to central Texas at Wainwright in Love Lady, Texas, until we could get that worked on. The last thing that we talked about at the meeting, and we've talked about it several times, is we're in conversation with Dr. Lamb, to see if we can get Texas A&amp;M to come up with, like a certification, or Vet Tech certification for our offenders that we have, inmates that we have working out in the agricultural program. Texas A&amp;M spends a lot of time out there with us, looking at our animals, and we're fostering that relationship, hopefully at some point, to get them to partner with us, to see if we can get some kind of agriculture-related certification for, through Texas A&amp;M. Our second meeting was at the Texas Department of Agriculture in Austin, Texas. We visited, that was the headquarters that we visited with them, and talked about what they provide, not only to our agency, but to the agricultural industry throughout the state of Texas. Again, Mr. Fordice had a lot of instructions and a lot of discussion about our capital items request and what that looks like. We're still extremely excited about the two chicken houses that are gonna be built by June. Ron Hudson told me it'd be by June, so I know that it'll be by June. Ron Hudson don't tell people it'll be by June. So, we should have 50,000 capacity in each house, is a big thing. And FY '24, our cannery system, we're working now for a continuous retort system, which will bump our production up from 300,000 cans to approximately 600,000 cans, is in the works. Mr. Stefan and us have been continuing to work on that. And the last thing is a cotton gin press that was purchased in FY '24, and it's scheduled to be installed this year in September, which will take us from having to go to private contract vendors in order to produce our cotton. One of the things, Mr. Collier, and I know Chairman, you've been talking about is our, the solar industry, and being able to provide alternate injury, energy, alternative energy. So, we have looked at that, we have contacted with several of our solar partners out there. We've actually, Mr. Gibbons in South Texas and West Texas, we're almost close of getting 30 acres and 85 acres down near Segovia Lopez, ready to put solar panels on. Mr. Fordice, Dr. Cliff Lamb, Texas A&amp;M just signed a, a large solar panel issue, so we're using their model as a copy for what we're doing right now. And we're continuing to work through several solar vendors and numeraries of the state to have it put on TDCJ property. Continuing education, I talked a little bit about Texas A&amp;M earlier, but continuing education, at a college level, secondary level of possible agricultural certifications in all of our enterprises, regardless of what that may be, not just a veterinary degree, but working in edible crops, working in our field crops, tractor drivers, diesel mechanics, whatever that may be. Last thing was, with the increase in the herd, also requires us to do some deforestation and land reclamation, meaning if I'm keeping back 500 head of cattle, I need to have some land that I can put them on so they can forge them, we can feed. And we're in the process of cultivating land and timber to exercise our adequate space for increasing the beef cattle herd. That's gonna be Ellis and Estelle, between both of those, 1,000 acres. Goree, Buffalo Ranch, Cofield and Ferguson will be extending as well. Last but not least, I'd like to thank, Mr. Fordice, I'd like to thank Pastor Sprinkle, Ambassador Sev. On Labor Day, August 31st, in the middle of these meetings, we had our horse sale. I know they talked about that earlier, about the shoeing and trimming with our horses, but we sold $662,000 worth of horses, hard-working people in agriculture, and provided that for the agency. And just thank y'all for coming and supporting us. I thank Mr. Fordice for, for everything that he does, mentoring, working with us, and, and keeping us headed in the right direction. And with that, I'll, I'll cease.
Well, are you gonna pause for any questions? So, any, any questions from the board on Mr. Lewis's?
Yes Chairman, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the hurricane, and, and some of the hurricane damage to facilities. I noted while visiting a, a couple of farming operations, that there was a loss of crops, and whether that be grain crops that might be used for feeding cattle, or the bean crops as such that we use to feed our inmates. Will there be any setback? Are we, are we behind in terms of our ability to provide feed for cattle and, and other livestock, or our inmates? Will we have unanticipated costs going to the, the, an outside market, for instance?
No, sir, there is some, when it relates to animal feed, corn being of which. Most of the crops that were affected were cotton, which we're gonna utilize to make our textile, but we have enough put back right now. I always try to keep about two years' worth of cotton put back, because you never know when you're gonna lose, what you're gonna lose. Impacts that we, that we got this year really were not foreseen in the areas that they were at. Ellis, we lost 1,000 acres that we hadn't lost there in a long time. Down south, we did get a lot of water and a lot of rain, but the edible crop side of it didn't hurt us that much. It's gonna be the field crop side, and cotton took the brunt of that, that we got. We will probably have to buy some corn this year, but it wasn't as bad as we thought we were gonna have to be. Yes, sir.
And how much did we make from the horse sale? You said 642, or 646,000?
662.
662?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that pretty, we're kinda on pace? Have we done better, or have we done worse?
We've done considerably better than last, than the previous years. 150,000 more is what we're looking at each year.
Really? Okay, great. Awesome.
Yes, ma'am. We sell 50 horses. Five of those are brood mares. This is the first time that we brought brood mares in that had a baby. And then we've sold yearlings this year that did pretty well this year. But as, and we've used another vendor, auctioning vendor to use this year. We've done it in, in College Station this year, and I've been talking to Mr. Collier, we may look at going to Sam Houston and bringing it maybe closer home, but we're looking at that. But they're, very, we're doing very well with them.
Good.
And the horse market is very good right now.
Good, good, awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Pastor Sprinkle? Just falling on, on the livestock implications of the Hurricane Burl. You said you moved a lot of swine up from Clemmons, up north, further north. How many head did y'all move?
Right about 2,000, 2,000 head.
Okay.
And what, we, we were moving them down south, and what we call growers, we get them bred at our farms up here, and we were moving them down south, just to get them to grow up to 300 pounds, around that, around that poundage is when we move them back. So, we were able to put them on a trailer and get them back to where areas that we could hold on to them. They weren't real babies that we, we lost in, in that process. So, we had them spread out in, you know, 300, 400 here, 300, 400 there to, to move, so. But we have since repaired all of them but two, and we're continuing to do that again. So, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for your presentation. Appreciate it.
I just have one comment, Mr. Chairman, and I think Bill and his staff doing an outstanding job, and I know we talked about our solar, but we're also digging a little bit deeper into carbon credits, which is a very complicated, marketable situation, but with the land resources that TDC has, and in the crops and the forest, there's an opportunity there, I think, that we're gonna be looking at through A&amp;M as well.
Well, we appreciate that, and, because it's initiatives like that, that can help us not only diversify our ability to, to generate the energy that we need for our system, but also, to your point, Tom, I mean, that is, that is a potential area where we could, we can bring some money back to the taxpayers of Texas. Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding purchases and contracts over $1 million. Chief Financial Officer Ron Steffah will be presenting today. Mr. Steffah, if you're ready, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chairman Nichols, board members, Mr. Collier. I have one purchase to bring to you today for your consideration and approval. It can be found on page 162 of your packet. It is a replacement contract for electronic monitoring utilized by our parole division. If approved, it would be, it would begin, the base period would begin January 1st and run through the end of this fiscal year, and then it would have three option periods remaining. It would also be awarded to BI Incorporated.
All right.
And that concludes it. I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Steffah. Are there any questions or comments on this proposed purchase from the board? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the purchase, purchases and contracts over $1 million as presented.
All right, I have a motion from General Welch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from General Welch, I have a second from Secretary Dr. Burrow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Steffah. The next item on our agenda is a status report from the Office of the Independent Auditor. Chief Audit Executive, Mr. Chris Cerito, will be presenting, and if you're ready, Mr. Cerito, please proceed.
Put it on. That's fair.
So I came prepared for you again this year. Good morning, members, Mr. Chair, Mr. Collier. I have several changes or updates to the status report that's in your packet. As we go along with the slides, I'll inform you of those changes. As you know, the status report is submitted approximately two weeks before the board meeting to allow time for it to get into the, to the agenda and into your board books, but we continue working, so I have quite a number of changes for you this time. So, the first change that I have for you, 2302, that was a fiscal year 23 project, but we intentionally spread it over two years, so that we could get, kinda get a good read. So our project on parole division culture is actually now a proposed final report. I have received Mr. Hinojosa's responses, we will be incorporating them, and then we will continue the process, meet with Mr. Collier, and then that will be distributed to the board. Our fiscal year 24 projects, I'll go down the list here. We had some carryover projects from the previous year. Project 2402, mental health assessments, that is now a proposed final report. We have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Collier to discuss the issues that are in that report. Project 2404, travel services, that will be moving to a proposed final report very quickly. We're working with Mr. Steffah on a couple of items associated with the action plans, and I anticipate that we'll be sending that forward to Mr. Collier's office sometime within the next week or so. 2406, Office of the Independent Ombudsman, that is actually now a final report. Jill distributed that to the board this morning. And then we have one ongoing project, 2409, incident reporting, and that has actually moved into report writing as well. Renee is actually currently working with the team on a draft report. 2411, emerging risks, as you know, emerging risks are those As you know, emerging risks are those things that come up during the year that we need to work on or that we need to do some audit work on, or we use that if the OIG needs our assistance looking into specific allegations. We had several that started during the summer prior to the change of the fiscal year. We just carried those over to the next year. One update on that, we have the TimeScan application. That started out as an inquiry into a specific complaint. Looking into that, we decided we needed to go ahead and do a full scope audit on it. We've been working with Mr. Steffa and Ms. Clark. We'll continue to work on that. We're moving into the fieldwork phase of that. Our fiscal year 25 projects, we have two consultations that are ongoing. We have a consultation on inmate custody. Also, an update, as you know, you grant me authority to change the approved audit plan so long as I notify you at the next board meeting. Project 2508 was a full scope audit of the purchasing and procurement process within TDCJ. However, as we started getting into that audit, Jennifer Gonzalez, the Business and Finance Division, is very heavily engaged with the comptroller's office to implement the cap system, the statewide cap system, which includes a significant purchasing model. So, what we've decided to do is do that as a consultation and assist them with the implementation, you know, basically providing them advice on risks and things that may come up as that piece, the purchasing piece of caps is put into place. We also have assigned two audits. 2507, which is a Wyndham School District audit, we are doing an audit of career and technical education tool control. Essentially what that is, is we're going into the various functions that Wyndham School District does. A lot of them have tools, and so we want to make sure that those tools are adequately safeguarded within the prisons. One that is not on your list, Renee actually signed earlier this week, 2504, inmate communication contracts. This is a compliance audit of the contracts that are in place for inmate tablets, inmate telephone calls and digital mail. One update on our follow-up work, Renee will be signing next week, our follow-up on structural integrity, the audit we did about a year and a half, almost two years ago on structural integrity. We previously assigned that prior to Hurricane Barrel, but due to the damage with Hurricane Barrel, we went ahead and postponed it while Mr. Lumpkin, Mr. Lewis were able to, you know, give them the time to deal with the damage that was done by the hurricane. And then lastly, before I open it up to any questions, as the auditor, I'm obviously kind of the keeper of the naughty and nice list, and I was going through my list and looking at the nice list, and on the nice list, all the dedicated tremendous employees of TDCJ, leadership, the board members, the thousands and thousands of wonderful, good things TDCJ does every day. So, first I want to acknowledge that's the case. Then I moved over to the other list. And moving through, over to the other list, I came across an entry, and also being the auditor and being aware of efficiency, this entry had so many line items that it would not have been efficient to print it, so what I've done is I've actually provided, or actually brought with me a digitized version of that. And Judge, I'll just show it to you. It's a status naughty list, single entry for Judge Molly Francis, and there are about 80 line items. So, with that, I will pause for any questions.
Only her, right?
Only her? There are others on the list, but I came across this one.
I don't know if it's appropriate for questions or defense, so I'm going to, I'm going to hand it over to Judge Francis. She is, she is speechless. This is, this is remarkable. I have, I have never seen a situation, I have never in my life seen a situation where this board member is speechless. All right.
But seriously though, Judge Francis, thank you for all that you do, and I genuinely enjoy our banter.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Cerito, for all of your work and the work of your team during the, during calendar year 2024. The work that you all do is vitally important to make sure that we have the checks and balances that we need. We need an independent auditor to make sure that we've got the, an independent audit group to make sure that we've got the appropriate checks that ensure that our systems are working efficiently and avoiding situations that involve fraud, waste and abuse. So, any other questions?
And I will just say one thing. I did a really nice, I had a really nice time with Stacy and with Erin up at the digital mail in Carrollton a couple of months ago, but they were very helpful and answered questions, and we got a lot of information.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, as a part of our walkthrough on digital mail services, we toured the facility, and Judge Francis joined two of my team members at that facility.
Fantastic. All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you, sir, and happy holidays.
You too.
The next agenda item is a report from our Inspector General, Mr. Chris Love. Mr. Love, you have been very appropriately recognized for your accomplishments earlier in the meeting, and if you're ready to provide us with an update on the operation of the Office of the Inspector General, please proceed.
Thank you, sir. Well, good morning. Yes, it's still morning. Chairman, members, Mr. Collier, once again, I'm honored to stand before you and give you some updates regarding the Office of Inspector General for the Texas Board of Criminal Justice that serves the Texas Department of Criminal Justice and the people of the state of Texas. And in the beginning, if I may, I would like to recognize three of OIG's peace officers, Lieutenant Lee Durin, Investigator Scott Zaragosa, Investigator J.D. Wallace. First of all, J.D. Wallace and Scott Zaragosa, on December 3rd, 2024, the United States Secret Service Houston Field Office members presented J.D. and Scott with the top forensic examiner award. This achievement marks Scott's third consecutive year and J.D.'s second consecutive year of achieving this prestigious recognition. The Secret Service's National Computer Forensics Institute recognizes annually its top 100 state and local law enforcement graduates trained in digital forensic examination techniques. In fiscal year 2024, J.D., J.D. Wallace ranked number 41, and Scott Zaragosa ranked number 100 overall out of more than 3,800 participating examiners nationwide. Next, I would like to, you know, recognize Lieutenant Lee Durin, who received the honor of graduating from the Texas Police Chiefs Association Officer Program, which consists of a series of classes that provide comprehensive leadership development for Texas law enforcement leaders. Congratulations. And then I would like to discuss the Strike Force team, if I may, again. In June of this year, as I mentioned before, we implemented the Strike Force, which works in collaboration with our criminal investigative operations and the TDCJ Fusion Center to combat the introduction of illegal contraband into our prison units throughout the state. This team proactively initiates potentially complex investigations and can involve various TDCJ and OIG regions throughout the state. The Strike Force team, since June, has made 43 arrests directly related to the introduction of contraband into the Texas residential facilities, and there have been over 150 charges in conjunction with these arrests. This team continues to develop leads and methods to counteract and reduce the flow of illegal contraband into the prison system. And then I would like to mention OIG Special Operations, which supports the Strike Force team and OIG Criminal Investigative Operations. They have established a very successful team to enforce the Texas Penal Code 38.112, tampering with electronic monitoring device. And in the first quarter of fiscal year 2025, 80 violations were reported to OIG with 28 arrests by OIG staff, 48 arrests by other law enforcement agencies and 62 charges being filed. These are, these updates are a snapshot of the work being accomplished daily by men and women of OIG who protect and serve our TDCJ community and the citizens of this great state. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you again for your tremendous service to the state. Any additional questions for Mr. Love? If not, thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report from the Office of the Independent Ombudsman. Independent Ombudsman Director, Mr. Brian Patrick, will be presenting. Mr. Patrick is at the podium, and when you're ready, please proceed.
Good morning and thank you, Chairman Nichols, Board members, Mr. Collier. Happy to report the Independent Ombudsman's statistics for the two-month look-back period from September 16th of 2024 through November 15th of 2024. The Office received a total of 802 inquiries, 778 were from the general public, 24 were from an elected official, excuse me. The most common categories that we received is a life and safety complaints, and again, those are ones where we could be notified that there is a concern for the life or safety of an inmate, or maybe one that was conducted as a protection investigation at the unit where they wanted to question the process, and we would do a third review of it. Medical issues as well, due to, obviously, privacy laws. We refer all of those to Health Services, but we do maintain a record of those. And third is facility-related issues. Historically, those are food service-related, pest control-related, or maybe something with the physical structure.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from, from Mr. Patrick on his report?
When you mentioned elected officials, not necessarily giving us the names, are you talking about state representatives, senators, judges?
Yes, ma'am, all the above. Once in a while, we also get one from a consulate wanting us to ask into one of the nationals that may be incarcerated, so those are included in that category as well.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
One elected official who asked for 24 inquiries?
No, no, sir. Those would be 24 separate. If we have one elected, let's say a state representative emails us or contacts us in the office and says, I have three issues to look into. Generally, if it's three different inmates, it would be three different cases. One inmate, no matter how many different complaints, it would just be one case.
Can you elaborate a bit on the life and safety inquiries?
Yes, sir. So, we have a code in the office for life and danger. It's a triple zero. What happens often is we receive a complaint straight to us from a family member. Sometimes it could be a letter straight from the inmate from the facility saying, my life is in danger, my safety is in jeopardy, and they list their reason why. We look into the computer and determine, does the unit know about this? There's a process and a policy for the protection investigations to be conducted at the unit. We look first and say, okay, do they know and are they doing it? We do not do the protection investigations. If we're the first to be notified, we look, and there's nothing about that inmate under protection, there's no protection investigation ongoing. We notify the unit senior warden, assistant wardens, and say, hey, we got this letter. Send them a copy of it, say, we need to look into whether a protection investigation is needed. Often it is, but there are times when they'll go to the inmate, and the inmate says, I don't know what you're talking about, I'm fine, and it's closed out like that. Sometimes, for example, that first example I gave you, the person may say, oh, well, he's being told he has to say that. You need to look into it, he really is in danger. We will then conduct investigation. We will look into it, we will do an interview, in person, phone interview. We want to be able to say with confidence, Ambassador, when we close that case out, there either is a problem or there isn't, and if there is, how do we best solve it?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, with 24 from elected officials and also the 778, are there any really bad bites there? I mean, some of the findings that you have, is there anything that we're unaware of that...
No, my policy requires me anytime that we have something of substance, something that's overly concerning, something that's serious, we bring it to the chairman's attention. He gets a report directly from me with an outline of the case, exactly what's happened, what steps we took, what we think is the problem and possible recommendations to it. It goes right to Chairman Nichols, and then, you know, we discuss what kind of other options are available. There are also, we do that in consultation with the division directors. You know, if we have before with the Plain State Jail, we had an issue with some of the kitchen equipment, meet with Mr. Hudson's deputy directors and say, hey, here's what's going on. I know there are some major work orders. You know, what is the problem that you know of, how's the seriousness of it? Here's what we're hearing is the seriousness of it, and we work those out before we bring it to the chairman's attention, just to make sure, at the end of the day, he gets a notice of what's happened.
And Mr. Patrick, I had the opportunity to visit with you and your staff here in Huntsville here recently, so please, on, in addition to what I was talking about with your staff during that meeting, please convey our sincere appreciation to all members of the Independent Ombudsman staff, and best holiday wishes and thanks for the work that's being done.
Absolutely. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays to everyone. The staff did appreciate you there, Chairman. Always appreciate having a visit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The, continuing with the updates from our board's direct reports, the next item on the agenda is a report from the Director of State Counsel for Offenders. Have we gotten to the point of changing the name yet, or? I'm going to ask you that question, so you've got a preview. But Ms. Wyvon Long, if you're ready, Ms. Long, you may proceed.
Thank you, Chairman, Board members, Mr. Collier. Over this past year, thank you, over the past year, we were fortunate to be able to hire five new attorneys. We've hired four new legal assistants and one secretary, one legal secretary. One of the attorneys we hired is actually a retired medical doctor, and she has just proved to be invaluable when we are crossing medical experts at trial. We still need eight attorneys, and so we continue outreach to law schools and being proactive with individuals, attorneys that are reaching out to our office, we have an attorney call them back, chat them up about our office, and so we're seeing some progress. We're excited about that. Office-wide, over the past year, we've opened over 1,800 cases. We've closed over 1,200 cases, and our office has handled over 21,000 pieces of correspondence.
Wow.
We received three no verdicts in civil commitment cases in the last year, and recently, Angela Jeter with our office worked with someone, Cynthia Rutherford in IT with TDCJ, to create a GoAnywhere account, which helps make the exchange of discovery between SPU and State Counsel seamless, safe and quick. And so we just appreciate those. We appreciate the collaboration working with them, and I will stand for any questions.
All right. Well, you know what, one of the questions I had, where are we in the, in the process of altering the name of your unit?
I think the name, I think we probably will go with Office of Independent Counsel, just because it's in keeping with the other board reports. And there were some weird acronyms, so that looks really safe. And I think because it's actually in statute, State Counsel for Offenders actually is ordered to represent civil commitment individuals. In the criminal code, it's a little better because they order the board to provide services. And so I think I reached out to Jill and sent her just a quick edit of Chapter 841. That code would actually have to be edited, and they could just take out State Counsel and put in Office for Independent Counsel. But if there comes a time when somebody else wants to change the name, it's really cleaner and more proper if 841 orders the board to provide services for civil commitment individuals.
Okay. Well, good.
Hopefully, within this legislative session.
Okay, so we are making progress on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? Yes.
The ever quiet me, where, where would you attribute our new hires? Where do you think they, where'd they come from, or how did they?
We started advertising on LinkedIn, and that, we've been a little more proactive with law schools. And so, other than that, I don't know. It's exciting to see new people. We did have one attorney leave in the past year, and I tell people when they come work for us, if you like people, I can teach you what to do, you can work here. If you don't like people, you're probably not really going to be a good fit for our office. And we have some people that come to work for us, and they say six months or whatever. So, we lost one over the past year, we gained five, and we just continue chatting up the office, so.
Excellent. Any other questions for Ms. Long? If not, thank you very much for the work that you're doing, and as I said with Mr. Patrick, please convey our best holiday wishes and thanks to the members of your team.
Absolutely. Happy holidays.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a report from the Prison Rape Elimination Act, Pria Ombudsman. Pria Ombudsman Cassandra Magobro will be presenting today. I see you're already up at the podium, so whenever you're ready, please proceed.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members and Mr. Collier. The Pria Ombudsman, we have... The Pria Ombudsman, we have heard my updates, we have some revisions as, just like Chris, I want to get the numbers in for October and November, we had to submit this presentation prior to that. So for the seven Pria Ombudsman compliance specialists have assisted with seven, within the seven regions, eight Pria audits at CID and PFCMOD, PFCMOD facilities from October to November, and we will take out their PFCMOD, but those are those private facilities, those RRCs, TTCs, and facilities that they have assisted with. The activity for our office, we had 346 Pria inquiries of those, we had 156 that were from the general public, and we had 190 from inmates, and so that was for October, November. Our new employees spotlight is Mr. Jane Book, James Booker, who is our new manager one. I didn't get to present Mr. Booker in October because he had a previous engagement, but Mr. Booker has began his career in 1998 as a correctional officer at the McConnell Unit. He's held previous positions within the agency, TDCJ, Parole Division, Armed Division, as well as Human Resources, and he holds a bachelor degree with 20 years of management experience. I have to say, Mr. Booker has been a breath of fresh air for the office. When Teresa, Teresa retired, I don't wanna start crying, but yeah, but Teresa was, was, was our office general, and she did a lot, and I told Mr. Booker that he had some very big shoes to fill, and I can tell you, he really has been a breath of fresh air for the office.
Welcome, Mr. Booker, and would you care to share a few words with us?
Sure, Chairman, Mr. Collier, Board Members, I just want to extend my wholeheartedly appreciation to be a part of an agency that is helping me grow, and I give you my word, I'm going to do my best to help this department be the best it can be.
Well, we appreciate you, thank you so much. Ms. McGilbro, make sure that not only with Mr. Booker, but all the other members of your team, that you convey our, our appreciation for all the hard work that was done during the past year, and also our best wishes for the holiday. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, when she introduced him and said that he had big shoes to fill, she looked down at his feet.
Well, you know, sometimes, I mean, when you say that, Vice Chair, the, sometimes I want to take these pictures before the board meetings, I nominate somebody to be the left tackle for the meeting, so, 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 Mr. Booker, you may, you may, you may meet that qualification, so I appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is the TDCJ Parole Division Spotlight. We would like to continue showcasing our parole division and parole officers who are out in our communities every day, making Texas a safer place and helping to change the lives of persons under their supervision. So I see Mr. Rene Hinaosa, our parole division director, who is approaching the podium, and I understand, Mr. Hinaosa, you'll be introducing parole officer Andrew Mojica. And thank you both for joining us today, and, Mr. Hinaosa, if you are ready, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairman Nichols, Mr. Collier, members of the board. Thank you once again for allowing us to highlight the parole division and the great work that our employees do, and also highlighting the success of our clients. But before I introduce Mr. Mojica, I would like to thank you, Chairman, for giving us the recommendation to do a parole hotline, or a helpline, and for giving us the vision to do that. I'm excited to announce that as of December 1st, 2024, a few weeks ago, we launched the helpline. It gives an opportunity for those, yes, you have a little handout there. It gives an opportunity for individuals on parole that are in need of help or assistance 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in, that are in crisis, and that need assistance in things like housing, or substance use, or, or reentry, to call this helpline and to get assistance. So, like to thank you, sir, for that vision, and thank you, Mr. Collier, for your guidance and, and help during this project, and I also want to thank Ms. Lila Smith, our Special Police Program's Director, and her staff, and our parole officers that work in our ISS, because they're the ones that are gonna be manning this helpline 24 hours a day, so thank you, sir, for that.
Mr. Hinaosa, if I might, I appreciate your attributing any of this to me, but in fact, is Mr. Hazelwood still here, is he still in the audience somewhere? Mr. Hazelwood was here, this, this idea did not come from me, this idea came from a member of our population, as I was attending a spiritual reawakening program at one of our units. I, I was visiting with some of the men who attended that, that spiritual reawakening, and, 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 and so one of the, one of the men said that if he had had a asset like this, if he'd had the, the ability to contact someone in the dead of night, at 2:00 in the morning, when that individual was in crisis, that from his perspective, he may not be back with, with the, in, in the TDCJ system. So, so I appreciate your words, but, and I'm not taking any of the credit for this, because it comes to a member of our population who was willing to step up and give this idea, but I do appreciate the implementation of this, and I'm sure the board would be interested in later presentations to hear, kind of what, what's the level of traffic that's being serviced through this hotline, helpline that's been established, so thank you, sir.
Absolutely, we are tracking it, and we'll be glad to, to provide you those numbers. So at this time, I'd like to introduce parole officer Andrew Mojica. Mr. Mojica started working for the parole division in October of 2023, here in the Huntsville District Parole Office. He started, as we all do, supervising the regular caseload, and in the November of 2024, was assigned to supervise the administrative caseload. He's actually supervising clients that report to the Bryan office, and he's helping them out. Mr. Mojica is a graduate of Sam Houston State University here in Huntsville, as I'm sure we have some Bearcats in the audience. Mr. Mojica tells me that he joined the division because he wanted to be a part of something positive and help people change their lives, so please help me welcome Mr. Andrew Mojica.
Good morning, my name is Andrew Mojica, I am a parole officer at the Huntsville District Parole Office. First, I wanted to take a moment to thank the Chairman, Mr. Collier, Mr. Hinaosa, and Mr. Kimbrough, and my supervisors, for allowing me the opportunity to not only highlight a client today, but also thank them for the opportunity to start my career here as a parole officer. Over a year ago, I graduated from Sam Houston State with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Life at that moment for me was frozen, I felt the path I chose before me. A long time ago, I decided that it was a good idea to study a field that related to my life around me, that had no definition, but more of a way of life without question. I was surrounded by people in my life that didn't see change as an option, or too often failed at change. So for a long time, I questioned why these people in my life forcefully accepted themselves to this type of unsustainable behavior as a way of life. I wanted to understand it, why these certain behaviors exist, why people don't want to change, and how to change, and when I graduated, I knew what it was, what I wanted to do. Today, I am a parole officer who supervises a regular caseload, so those clients found under this regular caseload generally do not have any parole stipulations that would categorize them to a higher level of supervision. But, more importantly, being on a regular caseload can also be earned. A good example of this is Mr. Jason Scott Jackson. Mr. Jackson released on parole on September 14th, 2022, and was supervised on two different caseloads, super intensive supervision caseload and a substance abuse caseload. And on May of next year, he successfully completed the super intensive supervision program, and was then placed on a substance abuse caseload. He then completed all the required programs for Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the substance abuse caseload. He was then transferred to a regular caseload on 9/8/2023, while on supervision, he has completed the New Beginnings Grant Qualification Program provided by Lee College. He is a graduate of Southwest Baptist Theological Seminary and Theological Studies located at TDCJ's Darrington Unit in Resheran, Texas. He currently resides in Navasota, Texas, and that's where he began his employment within two weeks of release as a machine operator, and he has currently been promoted as his current position as a gauge lab technician for access pipe and tube located in Bryan. Today, Mr. Jackson attributes his success to gaining and maintaining employment, sobriety, and successful participation in completion of treatment programs while on supervision. I give a grand congratulations to Mr. Jackson.
Chair, Mr. Jackson was unfortunately unable to be here today, because he had a work commitment, we was, he was gonna be here, and then he called us a week ago and said, I have to be at training, so I did not want to pull him from training.
Well, consistent with everything we, we believe, and that's much more important than being here before this board, but I wanted to say, Mr. Mojica, we also thank you, we also congratulate you for all the work that, that you do. And I believe we have a video?
Hello, Board Members, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to address you all. You know, my name is Jason Jackson, I was incarcerated in the Texas Department of Criminal Justice for 20 years for offensive murder, you know, it was just a tragic event, but a major turning point in my life, you know, one of a lot of self-reflection. And initially, like most people do when they get incarcerated, you know, pick up a Bible, but the difference was, I didn't just pick up a Bible, I actually read it multiple times, which produced a multitude of questions, and questions that I wanted answers to, which in large played a part in me applying for the Swyvid Seminary program that was offered on Darrington Unit. You know, that program answered a lot of those questions, gave me clarity on some of my biggest questions about what it was that I believed in. And so, I mean, I participated in multiple educational programs in prison, I went to, I graduated Lee College, I mean, I participated in the cognitive intervention program, but I believe it was the seminary program that played the biggest role, it gave me more of a moral underpinning to go forth and, and conduct myself in everyday life. It taught me how to apply what it was that I believed to my everyday life, you know, it's a saying that right teaching equates to right practice, you know, and I was released on parole from prison in September 14th, 2022. Upon release, I was kind of mandated to take substance abuse classes through BB CASA. They recommended, and gave us resources to a lot of job leads, you know, and, and just how to prepare yourself for a job interview, and as I made good on those opportunities, you know, there was never a time that my parole officer would deny me being able to go to a job interview, you know, I never, ever had an issue with being able to take care of an employment issue, or, you know, doctor's appointments, or anything that I needed that was gonna benefit me, the parole division was more than helpful. And they also, you know, had pamphlets, they had our kind of material on, companies that were felony-friendly, a lot changes in six months, but you're talking about 20 years, it's a whole lot that changed, and I do believe that, you know, that regimented progression of me being on parole, the way that I was phased back into society on my parole played a major part of my success. The benefit of being able to apply what I've learned about my faith in my life, everyday life, and how it's just matriculated to every, every, my life as I've transitioned out of prison, it's been, I mean, I, I could sit here and tell you about it all day, but just to give you some examples, I mean, I got a, I was blessed to get the job that I got now, you know, I worked for access pipe and tube in Bryan, I started out as a machine operator, but I got, constantly climbed the ladder, you know, I've had several promotions while there, I work in a metrology department as a gauge technician, you know, I didn't go to work in the ministry, but I do attend a, a small church where I stay at, it's New Hope Baptist Church in Navasota, Texas, and, you know, just anytime I have an opportunity to share my, my testimony with anybody, they're just, they move at what God has done in my life, you know, not by any accomplishments I made on my own, but just what God has brought me from, what it brought me to and through, you know, and for that, I just want to say thank you for everybody that was involved, whether it be TDCJ, whether it be the parole division, that has helped me immensely, you know, have a successful reentry into society, because at no point did they ever try to hinder my progress forward, you know, and we can be successful, given the right opportunities, and I just want to say thank you for allowing programs like the seminary program to exist, because they really do equip men to be successful when their heart's in the right place. So with that, I just want to say thank you and God bless.
Mr. Hinaosa, Mr. Mojica, thank you very much for being here, and also, Mr. Hinaosa, please convey our best holiday wishes to all the hard-working women and men within the parole division.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is an overview presentation on the facility division's infrastructure projects. Facilities Division Director, Mr. Ron Hudson, will be presenting today. Mr. Hudson, you're at the podium, and you're ready to go.
All right, thank you, and how do you follow that up? I mean, that was just great, so, wow, that's why I'm still here, so. All right, good afternoon, Chairman Nichols, Mr. Collier, members, I am extremely, extremely excited today to give you all an update on the agency's infrastructure projects, but before I get started on this, I do want to recognize some of my facilities team, since we had this in Huntsville today, I was able to bring some of my facilities team here today, so I kind of want to recognize them, because without them, everything I'm gonna present today, I mean, they are the ones that are behind this, they're the ones that make this happen, they work 24/7, not just them, but everybody in the facilities division, almost over 1,100 employees work tirelessly every, every day taking care of this agency. But I do want to take a moment just to recognize my staff that's here with me today, if y'all would, if y'all would just stand up. I've got my two deputies with me, Paul Glass and Damon Andrews, y'all see those at, at the board with me a lot of times, behind those, I have my Director of Engineering, Mr. Dell Cox, he's also an attorney, and then I also have my, my environmental manager here today, Jason Pierce, and then I have Jamie Reynolds here, she is over our, our program administration that takes care of all the budget, and then I also have Larry Kent here today, he is over our project administrators who oversee all of our construction projects, and the one that's not here today is our Director of Maintenance, which he's retiring at the end of January, so he's taking some time off, so he's not here today, and then Rhonda and Karen, do y'all want to stand up? These are the two that work here in my office, they keep me straight every day, and they've got a full-time job doing that, so, thank y'all again for being here today. First slide. On the first slide here, what I, you know, want to present today is, there is a correlation with the amount of funding that we get, with the amount of projects that we can do within a biennium year, so when you look at FY '18 and '19, and you look at the number of projects, the amount of funding we got then, we got about $45 billion in that biennium, and we were able to do about 1,088 projects, going into 2021, $86 million, we were able to do a little, almost right at 1,300 projects, '22, '23, $127 million, you know, right at 1,700 projects, and then in 2025, you know, right at 360 million, and we're already at 1,075 projects already, and that's gonna continue to grow. So I wanted to show, it's just that correlation of just the amount of funding that we get and the amount of projects that we can do, and how important it is to keep that amount of funding coming, because we can get more projects done and more work done. So, I kind of wanted to show y'all that today, and then, you know, we have two major type of projects, you know, we have, you know, that's the kind of way that we break this down, is we have, on the first slide here, is our construction-related projects, is our first one, and then the second one I'll get to in a minute, is core equipment-related projects. So the first one I'm gonna talk about is our construction-related, and you see the different types of projects that goes into this, into these types, you got, you know, a security and safety, you have roofing, facility repair, infrastructure, and kitchen and laundry, so these are our major construction projects. Under security and safety, so far, since September 1 of 2024, we've been able to accomplish 133 projects in this category. Also under this, and I didn't outline it here, but also is our x-ray, our body scans, work that we're doing as far as installing those, our body worn camera projects goes under that category, and then our MRI trainers, which was touched on yesterday, to, you know, to reduce the amount of transports we have going on, that's also gonna fall into that safety and security. But under our, our roofing category, we've been able to do 37 projects, our facility repair item, we've done 131 projects, our infrastructure projects, we've been able to accomplish 33, and then our kitchen and laundry projects, we've been able to do 52 projects in that category. So, all that combined, we've been able to do right at 386 projects in this category that equates to right at $77 million worth of work we've been able to do just in this category. in this category so far with about nine more months to go. So very proud of the work we've been able to get accomplished in that, and that number continues to grow every day. Then on the next slide, you can see just some of those pictures that we've been able to do across, across the state, you know, like down south at the Clemmidge, you know, just on perimeter lighting. The Beeto Ice House roof, which I brought that project to the board now. We were able to put a brand-new roof on that before we put all that brand-new equipment in that ice house. You know, pipe chases, the Gory water system. We were able to put a brand-new pumping system in there to maintain that, that water pressure there on the Gory unit. And then a kitchen floor at Memorial, the Wallace Door Project, a huge project we have going on, and just a pipe chase project down at the Garza East. So, go on to the next one. Okay. The next type of projects we have that I'm going to hit is on core equipment. You know, what core equipment refers to is all the equipment that is essential just to the daily operations of any of our TDCJ facilities. You see how we break all those down. You've got generators, boilers, ventilation, and then our, and our water and our wastewater. So in our generator projects, we've been able to accomplish 38 projects in that category. In our boilers, we have 85 projects. Ventilation, 236 projects. And then water and wastewater, 44 projects, for a total of 403, you know, right at $31 million that we've already encumbered already or, you know, are obligated or expensed already just in our core equipment. So again, numerous amount of, 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 of infrastructure projects we've been able to accomplish already. So. And then again, on the next one, you can see just some of those projects we've got going on. If you look at the bottom left corner down here, that's actually of the city Houston in the background. Right after Hurricane Burl, we lost one of our chillers down there. And this is actually our staff, you know, where we had to bring in a crane company come in where they had to, to actually lift that chiller on top of the Keegan's, which I thought was a pretty cool picture today. And then you've got boilers. The second picture at the top right is actually at the Young Unit, some air conditions we just got finished installing there at the Young Unit. The second picture there is a, you know, one of our generators at the Johnston Unit. The next picture there is going to be just a lot of work we've been able to do up at the Snyder Warehouse with just a lot of the infrastructure work there for our freezers and our coolers. So just a broad range of projects here just under core equipment. Then on the next slide, I just kind of want to hit on just water and wastewater real quick. You know, like you heard me talk a while ago about the 44 projects we're able to accomplish here. You know, many of our old units were built in areas where we can't get a local municipality to bring water or, or take our wastewater. So we have to take care of that infrastructure ourselves. Okay? So we have 37 wells on 18 units, and we've got 15 water, wastewater treatment plants on 19 units that we have to take care of. So of those 44 projects already, we've been able to invest right at 6.5 million back into our infrastructure of our wastewater and our water treatment plants. But also to talk a little bit about that is, you know, right now, we've got a Ferguson water treatment project going on. Without the amount of funding we got going on right now, we couldn't bring projects to the amount that we're getting on that. Another project that I'm going to bring into the board before the end of the year is a brand-new wastewater treatment program for the, for the Wainwright Unit. You know, most of these plants that we have were built when those units were originally built. So now we're taking the opportunity now to be able to design and build brand-new plants. So this is allowing us to do a lot of that infrastructure work there. So. And again, these are some of our pictures of some of our plants. And I kind of want to highlight the inmate y'all see down here in the picture right here. You know, I can't remember if it was Chairman Nichols or Mr. Collier talked about at the sunset hearing when, when the sunset was talking about being able to train inmates. You know, one of the things that happened last session is, 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 is we really worked with the TDLR to be able to give our inmates a provisional license now in water and wastewater. So we were able to train 29 inmates last year in, in '24, or this year in FY '24, to give them that provisional license where we have teacs where Texas A&amp;M come in and they do that, that, that training for us. And then once they're done, then TCU comes in and tests those inmates. If they pass the test, they get a provisional license. So when they get out, it's just a, I mean, it's just a job skill set that when they get out, they can actually, we've vetted those inmates through TDLR already so they can get that license. So, you know, by having those inmates have that provisional license really, you know, allows those inmates to really take care of our equipment and have that buy-in to our wastewater treatments and to our water plants. So something that we're very proud of. One of the other infrastructure things that we've had going on this year, as y'all know, is just all the repopulation efforts that we've had going on. And facilities has played, has played a, has played a huge role in that initiative. You know, you see the All Red Unit and the Stiles Unit where we're adding beds, the Bartlett Unit where we're, where we opened that up recently. Garza East is another unit we've opened up recently. W-6 is on, is, you know, we're going to be opening that up here in the near future. The Gurnee Unit, the Michael Trustee Cap. And then we opened up the Connolly 18 Building, which is not listed up there. The Smith Unit, J-4 Building, and the Lionel Unit, J-3 Building. So when you add all of those up, you know, from what we've done in '24 and leading into '25, that's a little over 7,700 beds where we're going to be, you know, where we're going to be able to bring those beds back online. But just, just the nature of the work that goes into that, you know, bringing those units that's been idle or closed for seven or eight years, it just takes a lot of work to get those things and bring those things back to life. And, and again, our staff has done a, you know, just a tremendous job. And here's just a few of those pictures I wanted to share with y'all. If y'all have been by the Bartlett Unit, which many of y'all have, and y'all seen the work that's gone on there. It's just tremendous amount of work. The Michael Unit Trustee Cap, where we're adding a fence with TCI, putting that around it. The All Red Unit, where we're adding the bunks to those. And then on the next slide, you'll see just some of the work we've done at Gurnee. You know, we've, I believe we've got three of the housing units ready to go there. Garza East is back online, and W-6 is right behind it. So just a lot of work that we've invested back in the infrastructure of those units, you know, when we bring those things back to life. And then one of the huge, huge initiatives that, you know, that we've had, you know, fire alarms is something that prior to being able to get the amount of funding that we've been able to get in '22, '23, and '24, '25, you know, and just the amount of money we've been able to pour back into our fire alarm systems. You know, prior to probably FY '23, when you look at the amount of fire alarms, we had operational and partially operational, that number was around 20 units. You know, to date, right now, we have right at 35 units that's operational. We have 26 units that's partially operational. You know, right at about 36 units that's non-operational, but we've got 77 active projects that's going on right now to get those fire alarms back operational. You know, when you talk about bringing them back operational, it costs somewhere between $700,000 and $900,000 per unit to bring those fire alarms back operational. And when you look at a unit like that, you know, like at the Hughes Unit, you've got 665 different devices on that unit that has to go through, that has to be repaired, has to be certified before they can certify that fire alarm. For a unit like the Hunts, you know, like, like the Hughes Unit, when you talk about the fire alarms, the fire suppression system, sprinklers, hose reels, stand pipes, backflow preventers, and you'll see on, on the, on the next slide, you'll just see just the magnitude of a lot of those, you know, items that I'm talking about, that has to be inspected, it has to bring operational. But again, you know, we've expensed about $16 million in FY '24. And so far in FY '25, we've expensed a little over $36 million already to bring our fire alarm systems back up to operational. Our goal is by the end of '25 is to have most, if not all, of these fire alarm systems across these units back in operational. We had a vendor show back last year to where before this, we were down to probably only about three or four vendors that we were using. We had a vendor show in partnership with our Contracts and Procurement Group where, where, where we had a vendor show, matter of fact, here in this room. And now we have upwards of about 20 vendors now coming in that are partnered with us to work on our fire alarms. So something that we're very, very proud of on this initiative, and something that we're really looking forward to getting all these fire alarms and these systems back operational. So. Okay, on the next slide, you know, just some of our, of our current projects that I, you know, that I brief y'all on. Our Ramsey Training Academy, there's a picture of it right now. We're getting very close to having that one back open. The Clemmidge Chiller Project, the Gesture Three Roof, we're at about 95% on that project. The Ramsey Roof, the Ferguson Construct Water Treatment Plant, the Tarow One, that's just getting off the ground. When we get done with that one, that's going to look like a brand-new plant. And then at the Montford Roof, that's one that we just completed, that I brought to the board yesterday, that we just completed that project. So I did want to talk, just, you know, just a little bit about, just kind of show y'all just some of the pictures and just some of the progression that we're making on a lot of those projects. Because the next one I want to talk about is where we are on our HVAC initiative. You know, like, this is something that's very important to everybody and just a lot of stakeholders. Just kind of brief y'all kind of where we are on it. The Fast Track Units, the thousand-bed prototype units in the 2250s are all design complete. All of those are. You know, normally when we, you know, normally when we get projects and we get money, most of those projects are already fully designed when we get money. We didn't know we were going to get air conditioning money, so that kind of sent us back a little bit that, that we had to get all those projects designed. And I'm happy to say that every one of those air conditioning projects on that list now are 100% design complete, and they've been sent over to Contracts and Procurement, and they're actually now working through the process of what they need to do to get that RFP built and get those out on the street, which I brought Goodman to the board yesterday. And here in a minute, I'm going to present to that, you know, here in a minute for y'all to approve that one. So then you go down to the bottom of the list, the other locations, the O'Dander Unit and the, and the Young Unit, those will be complete by the end of the month. Again, when we finish those two units, those units will be fully air-conditioned. So that'll be two more units we can fully air-condition. Right behind it is the Lopez Z Building. It's complete. And then the Berg Unit, there's 15 beds at the Berg Unit. Those air-conditioned units are on site. We're fixing to start installing those. The Sanchez Units, those are in procurement. They have a PO. Again, the Bartlett Unit will be air-conditioned. That equipment's bought. It should be in in January. We'll start the installation on it. I mentioned the Goodman Unit, and then the Gurnee Unit. So that's kind of where we are on that. And as, as like Mr. Collier mentioned a while ago, when we finished all these initiatives, right now we have 46, you know, just a little over 46,000 beds that are air-conditioned. When we finish completing all of these, we'll have just a tad over 62,000 beds that'll be air-conditioned at that point. That will bring our total amount of air-conditioned units. Right now, we have 32. That will bring us all the way up to 45 units that will be totally air-conditioned when we finish this first phase of our air-conditioned plan, which is going to be very, very important. Next thing I want to talk a little bit about is our security fencing initiative that we've got going on. And FY '23 is when we started Phase One, okay? So I kind of wanted to talk about Phase One before I got into Phase Two. So you'll just see just the amount of units we were able to get done in FY '23 that leads me into our Phase Two, which is my next slide. These are the ones that we're currently working on right now. Right now, currently, on these here, currently on the microwave, we have the Roach Unit and the High Tower that are complete with the remaining of those units that are in construction right now. And then on the Pulse Fences, the Hughes and the Stiles Units are complete. With the All Red McCollin Robertson Units, all three of those should be complete within the, probably the next 60 days on that. By the end of '25, that's going to bring the total number of microwave fences that we have installed will be 14, and 10 Pulse Fences. Right now, current to date, we have, right now, we have collapsed 170 positions so far. If my calculations are correct, by the end of '25, our numbers will be up somewhere around about 225 positions that will be totally collapsed. That'll be an annual savings of somewhere about $11.2 million a year in annual savings by us collapsing those positions on CO salaries, where we can put those positions back in the building. So just another initiative. About $11.2 million. That's based on the average salary of a correctional officer now. So the payback and just the return on investment on that's going to be really quick. Probably within about five years, we'll have all those fences paid for by just collapsing those positions, which is very important. All right. One other item I want to talk about real quick is just our Montford Chu Project. Again, this is one of the things to where we're going to be able to bring more sheltered bed housing up to the Montford Unit, which is really going to help out the Texas Tech sector, what they're going to be able to do in that region up there. This is design complete. The CR Packet's being routed right now. Again, this is one of those projects. We didn't know we were going to get funded or not. So we had to put that in design in the beginning of FY '24. We're, you know, we just finished that up in November, and we are routing that over to CUP. Where you look over here to the right, where you see the sheltered housing over here, those two dorms there will actually be the ones that we converted into the sheltered housing. That will give us 112 beds there at the Montford Unit. The medical area you see up there at the top, again, that, that area right there will be converted into a medical area, and it will also be air-conditioned. The other two remaining dorms you see in the back, those will be air-conditioned. The dining hall and the vocational areas are in the middle of the unit. That will all be air-conditioned. Those will all be upgraded, and those will all be ADA accessibility. And again, our goal on it is to bring this to the board sometime later on this year and then start construction on that shortly after that. Then the last thing is, is the holiday training, the structure training building, which I got a little bit ahead of myself yesterday. Again, we should be breaking ground on it in January. And again, we'll be having a groundbreaking ceremony on it. One thing, I do want to challenge everybody, that we do need to come up with a name for that deal because the holiday training facility just doesn't sound right. So at some point, we need to name that at some point. So before we start building the signs. So again, there is a lot of moving parts, a lot of work going on in the facilities division. And again, I just want to echo again and, and just thank all the staff out there in facilities for all the jobs that they do every day. Because, I mean, this is unprecedented amount of money that we got this biennium, and it just takes a lot of work to be able to pull this off and get this done. And it's just not facilities, but it takes all the divisions working together to come together to get that done. And I can't thank everybody enough to get that done. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Collier?
Looking at Ron, I kind of say this is all. Baseball, but anyway. I just want to tell Ron, and I want to tell all the folks from facilities here today, you can see the work that they do. And one key thing about, we're very fortunate, and we've been very blessed with getting funding from the state leadership. But when we get that funding, the way we continue getting that funding is showing that we put it to work. We get it spent. We get it spent on what they told us to spend it on, and we make it work. And that, and Ron and that team of facilities, y'all absolutely do that. And I just want to take my hat off and say thank you. Appreciate all that you do. Y'all do yeoman's work every day and appreciate all the hard work y'all do.
Any other questions on Mr. Hudson's report? I see Mr. Fordice.
I just want to make a comment, Chairman. I, I think Ron's done an outstanding job and his staff as well. In agriculture, we contend with the weather, and obviously, he contends with the weather as well. So hats off. You've done an outstanding job with your staff.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? If not, we're going to get along with another agenda item that you're responsible for, Mr. Hudson. The first is the discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Facilities Division Construction Project Request to Renovate Ice House, Beeto Unit, Anderson County, Tennessee Colony, Texas. If you're ready, please proceed.
Yes, sir. In your agenda packet, you will see the job scope of a new project to renovate Ice House at the Beeto Unit located in Tennessee Colony, Texas. At the Business and Finance Committee, I briefed this new project and am now asking for the board's approval for a total program cost of $3,042,000. I will pause for any questions.
Any additional questions or comments from the board over and above what we did yesterday?
I have one real quick. Mr. Hudson, this is the, the one we just put a new roof on.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this renovation is inside then? It would be inside the?
Yes, sir. What we wanted to do is go ahead and get like a new roof on that building before we brought this project forward. We wanted to make sure that we protected all of our assets before we put all that in the building. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And if there are no other questions, do I have a motion?
Yes, you do, Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request to renovate the Ice House at the Beeto Unit in Anderson County, Tennessee Colony, Texas, as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Pastor Sprinkle. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Pastor Sprinkle. I have a second from Secretary Dr. Burrow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Facilities Division Construction Project Request to Install HVAC, ISF, Goodman Unit, Jasper County, Jasper, Texas. Mr. Hudson, please proceed.
Okay. In your agenda packet, you will see the job scope of a new project to install HVAC, ISF at the Goodman Unit located in Jasper, Texas. At the Business and Finance Committee meeting, I briefed this new project and am now asking for the board's approval for a total program cost of $2 million. I will pause for any questions.
Over and above anything that was discussed yesterday, are there any additional questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. I, I move that the Texas Board of Criminal, sorry. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request to install HVAC, ISF, at the Goodman Unit in Jasper County, Jasper, Texas, as presented.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Johnson. I have a second from Judge Francis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Lewis, we're going to call you back. The next agenda item is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed land transaction request for drainage easement, Segovia Unit, Hidalgo County, Edinburgh, Texas. Mr. Lewis, when you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Nichols, Mr. Collier, and members. We discussed during the business and financial operations yesterday. We have two items on the agenda. The first is Hidalgo County Drainage District Number One Request a Drainage Ditch Easement on approximately 1.95 acres to improve drainage in Hidalgo County Drainage District Number One. The above open drainage ditch is a part of the project to improve drainage. The above open drainage ditch is a part of the project to improve drainage. Its easement includes language requiring indemnification as a grantee's responsibility, the Most Favored Nations Clause, and was compensated at the current geographical appraisal. It'll be a thirty-year lease negotiated at nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. We recommend the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request for a permanent right-of-way easement to the Hidalgo County Drainage District Number One. I stand available for questions.
Over and above the discussion that was held yesterday during the committee meetings, any additional questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request for a drainage easement at the Segovia Unit in Hidalgo County, Edinburgh, Texas, as presented.
I have a motion from Secretary Dr. Burrow, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Burrow, I have a second from Ms. Zeicher. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is a discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed land transaction request for a new extension of electric power substation and power lines, Beto Unit, Anderson County, Tennessee Colony, Texas. Mr. Lewis?
Encore Electric Delivery Company and TDCJ Request an easement to benefit the Texas Department of Criminal Justice, Beto Unit, and other prison properties that share the land. The company requests approximately zero-point-three acres of land to install a new electric power station with a new power lines. The project is to enhance existing power station and upgrade it with a new station and lines for the security of electrical power resources necessary to keep all of our prisons operational and without interruption. This easement includes language requiring indemnification as a grantee's responsibility, Most Favored Nations Clause. Compensation was not negotiated at current geographical appraisal value due to this project benefiting the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. We recommend that Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the request for a permanent right-of-way easement to Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Over and above the discussion we had on this item yesterday during the committee meetings, any other questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move the Texas Board of Criminal Justice to approve the request for a new and/or extension of the electric power substation and power lines at Beto Unit in Anderson County, Tennessee Colony, Texas, as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Judge Francis, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Judge Francis, I have a second from Vice Chair Johnson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. The next and last item on our agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the selection of the Inspector General. As you've heard earlier today, the Office of the Inspector General is an organization that reports directly to this board and investigates allegations of criminal activity and misconduct that impact TDCJ programs, personnel, and resources, including waste, fraud, and abuse. As outlined in our board policy, our board appoints an inspector general to lead that office, including its over two-hundred-and-thirty dedicated law enforcement professionals and staff. Among other things, those dedicated women and men work to combat criminal activity that adversely impacts TDCJ's operations and its populations, including through contraband activity. These valued personnel also work in task force partnerships with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the United States Drug Enforcement Administration, and the United States Marshals Service. Following current Inspector General Chris Love's announcement of his retirement, the Correctional Law Enforcement Committee of this board, comprised of Board Members Tom Fordice as Chair, General Bill Welch, Ms. Sidney Zeicher, and Pastor Nate Sprinkle, engaged in a nationwide search process for Mr. Love's successor. I would now turn the mic over to the Chair of that Correctional Law Enforcement Committee, Mr. Tom Fordice, for a description of that search process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a prepared statement, but I, I wanna also thank Sidney Zeicher and Nate Sprinkle and General Welch for their help with this committee, selection committee. The selection committee was entrusted with the important responsibility of identifying the most qualified and capable individual to serve as Director Seven Inspector General. To attract a comprehensive and diverse pool of candidates, we conducted a nationwide search posting this critical role on multiple hiring platforms, including indeed LinkedIn, the Texas Workforce Commission website, and our, and our agency website. This position was open for applicants from September the eighteenth through October the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Following the close of the application period, Human Resources conducted a rigorous initial screening to ensure applicants met the minimum qualifications. From this review, the selection committee evaluated eligible candidates, carefully considering each applicant's background, experience, and expertise. Eight candidates from across the nation were invited to participate in the interviews. The interviews allowed the committee to engage in thoughtful discussion about each individual qualifications, strength, and suitability for the role. After careful deliberation, we reached a unanimous decision and selected the candidate we believe is the most qualified to lead this critical position. Our recommendations flex not only the qualification of the candidate, but also the strong alignment with the committee. The uniform decision underscores our shared confidence in the candidate's ability to uphold responsibility to this role and lead the agency with integrity and excellence. This careful and deliberate selection process underscores our commitment to transparency and accountability in choosing the leadership for this role. Thank you.
Just a few questions, Mr. Fordice. First of all, a comment, I, I, as Chair, I very much appreciate the hard work of the Correctional Law Enforcement Committee on this process. From my understanding, that were, there were countless hours spent in evaluating applications, in conducting interviews, in evaluating backgrounds, in conducting interviews of references and prior employers and so forth, so I just wanna, and I know I speak for the entire board in expressing our appreciation to all of the hard work by each of our four members of the Correctional Law Enforcement Committee. Just a couple of follow-up questions, if I might, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do you, does a committee believe, that is, the Correctional Law Enforcement Committee believe that there was enough time that this position was posted that it could result in a large enough applicant pool, a diverse pool from various jurisdictions, and to allow the committee to evaluate the best possible candidate?
Yes, sir, I believe so. We had candidates from the northwest of the United States, down to the southwest and northeast and southeast and everywhere in between. We had candidates from the FBI, from Secret Service, Homeland Security, I mean, it was a full gamut of law enforcement. I think we had an applicant pool that was tremendous, and it was a lot of long hours, as you said, and a lot of late night, late night phone calls that can, you know, we have questions amongst each other, and so it was a thirty-day tireless effort to get through, to finally get to the right person we needed to make a selection.
And then with respect to the actual, those who came out of the pool to actually engage in, in interviews, can you speak to the qualifications and character of the, of the, in general, of the, of those, of those applicants who were selected for interviews?
Those top candidates were outstanding. They, they brought a wealth of knowledge that we were able to glean from their knowledge that they expressed in their interview, that I think that we can pass on to the incoming Inspector General, and hopefully, he'll take up some of those recommendations that we heard from that group.
Okay. Any other questions concerning, from the board, concerning the process that Mr. Fordice has laid out on behalf of the Correctional Law Enforcement Committee? Judge?
It was my understanding you all had, I know you spoke to many applicants, but you had, what, over fifty, fifty-seven applications? So you all literally examined, read them first, and then you also looked at them thoroughly, and then you came to interview, or you broke it down to interviewing about eight people, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So those were quite a few applications you had?
Yes, it was.
Okay, I wanted to make that note.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Johnson. Any other questions about the process? If not, if there are no further questions, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I move that the Texas Board of Criminal Justice approve the selection of Lance Coleman as Director Seven Inspector General effective December the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
All right. Now, now, yeah. Now, hold on here. We got an impatient crowd out there. All right. So we have a, we have a motion made by the, Mr. Fordice, as Chair of the Correctional Law Enforcement Committee of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice. Do we have a second?
Well, I don't know, Chairman, I might let him sweat a little bit.
All right.
You got a second?
All right. I, I have a motion from the Chair of the Correctional Law Enforcement Committee, I have a second from Pastor Sprinkle, who is also a member of that committee. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Coleman, would you care to share a few words with us?
Thank you so much for the long-awaited consideration and support. What an honor. I am so excited to have this opportunity to lead the Office of Inspector General, how should I say, Chairman Nichols, members, and Mr. Collier, kinda got sidetracked a little bit. I don't know who brought up the idea of having the Correctional Law Enforcement Committee, but that's absolutely probably the most, or the best thing that's happened to us, to have a voice out there, so I am very excited to work with Chairman Fordice, General Welch, Ms. Zeicher, Pastor Sprinkle, to further our goals and objectives. Mr. Collier, I'm looking forward to working with you and your new executive staff, Mr. Lumpkin, Mr. Stefa, Mr. Clark, and their staffs to make our correctional community much safer. And I would like to thank Chris Love, I think y'all have heard his name a couple of times today, for his support and leadership over the past twelve years, we've had a chance to work together. First met Chris in about eighty-seven, we were both troopers together, so our paths have crossed through the years, but he has been an inspiration to me, he has been a mentor to me, and I wouldn't be here right now had it not been for him. And last but not least, I have three co-deputy directors in the back, David Mayo, Felicia Taylor, and Tony Allison, and we have a great working team, and without their support, I wouldn't be here either, so with that, I will yield back to you, 'cause I know I'm the last of you on the bottom, so thank you so much again.
Well, last but not least, and, and I appreciate your mentioning the members of the OIG team, because it is a team, it's not just about the Inspector General. So as you've heard me say to others, I'm gonna ask you and Mr. Love, who's back in the back, to make sure that, that the, every member of our outstanding Inspector General team understands how much we appreciate their work, and how much of a difference it makes to the safety, public safety, of the state of Texas. I mean, not many people know about the full breadth and scope of what the Inspector General's operation does, but if people knew, it wouldn't just be us thanking every woman and man that, that works within that team for the great work that's being done every day. So please thank them for us, and also pass along our best wishes for happy holidays and, and hopefully, a little bit of respite between now and, and the end of the year. So with that, I'll pass the baton to anyone else who would like to make any comments or, or questions. Mr. Collier?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to say to Lance, congratulations, but I look forward to working with you in, in your new role, and just appreciate it, working with you over the years, and just really look forward to working with you, but thank you.
There's not one person that's taught me more about TDCJ than Brian Collier, I can assure you. I've had the opportunity working, like he said, for years, and back to our previous boss, and had the opportunity to travel around the state with you and see prisons, and so I appreciate you, and had it not been for that, the role I had, probably wouldn't know half of what you've showed me. Now, I hadn't remembered all of it, but I remember a lot of it. But thank you, Chairman, we will, you know, we, we work really hard to hire the best quality people, and with y'all's support, and so excited about the Correctional Law Enforcement Committee, it's just unbelievable that we have that opportunity to work with, with your board like that.
Well, thanks again, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I would like to thank all of you for coming here today, or for being online to view us on the YouTube channel, and remind you, the next meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice will be Friday, February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, in Austin, Texas. There being, being no further business, the two-hundred-and-thirty-eighth meeting of the Texas Board of Criminal Justice is now adjourned. It is twelve-thirty-five PM. I need to go to the restroom.